Everyone here? Call this meeting to order. Please join me if you can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the preamble to the Constitution of Missouri, we, the people of Missouri, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe and grateful for his goodness to establish this constitution for the better government of the state. And now we'll ask Ted Martin to give the invocation.
Good evening. If you'll join me in prayer. Our most gracious, heavenly Father, we thank you for another beautiful day in Ozarks and for the opportunity together tonight to do the City of the Business, or the Business of the City. And we just pause for a second as we invite you in these chambers to asset all the decisions, all the discussion, all the work is done in the honor and glory to you. Father, we thank you for the city employee Cory Powell being recognized as an Employee of the Month and for the work he does that champions within our engineering department, but also thankful for the 200-plus employees that serve our Branson citizens and visitors and businesses. Father, we love you, praise your just name, amen.
Thank you, Ted. Madam Clerk, if you would, the roll call.
McConnell, Whiters.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Akers.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Milton.
Here.
Z.
Here.
Your Honor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Special recognition at this time Cory Powell, if you'll come forward, and Alderman Milton, if you would.
It is my privilege to present the City of Branson Service and Excellence Employee of the Month Award for July 2020 to Public Works and Engineering Project Manager Cory Powell. This award is recognized, this award is to recognize employees who have gone above and beyond and whose performance exemplifies the City of Branson values. Cory recently worked on an urgent request for signage that needed to be designed and produced for a COVID-19 testing site. He worked nonstop, staying late, coming in early, and even worked on the weekend to design, cut, print, and manufacture over 20 signs for the testing site. This signage not only helped with the navigation, or the navigating of the public, but also kept testing personnel safe from unneeded exposure. He produced quick, professional signage, but he also dramatically reduced costs to taxpayers for the immediate production in-house of the needed signage. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Aldermen, city administrator, and city staff, it is my honor to present this plaque naming Cory Powell as the City of Branson July 2020 Service and Excellence Employee of the Month.
Congratulations. Congratulations Cory.
Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Milton. It's now time for our public comment section, just a couple of comments before the public comment. We do have clean wipes up here to wipe off the microphone area or wipe around the area if someone's going to speak. And if you wish to take down your face covering while you're there so you can speak more clearly, you're more than welcome to. But I'd encourage you, if you do that, then wipe it down before you leave, if you would. In order to give everyone a chance to speak tonight, I would like to ask if you're speaking on an item that you keep your comments succinct to the topic and as short as possible. You will be allowed to only speak once on an item, and please do not repeat what has already been said by another person. Once public discussion is ended on an item and the board starts their discussion, no additional comments will be taken from the audience unless an Alderman wishes to call someone back up for clarification. Please remember to speak into the mic, state your name and address for the record. We do have a five-minute time limit. We're trying to keep as sharp to that as we can, so as you come forward, as your name is called, you have five minutes that'll be up on the board here and over there for you to keep track. This time, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Your Honor, our first speaker is Doug Clark.
Okay. I've been here a number of times over the last...
Doug, we recognize you, yes, sir.
...couple of months, and I'm from 121A St. Andrews Street. What my concern is here is, and I've kind of expressed it all along, there's a lot of variabilities in the ways that we're measuring, testing, testing results, mechanics of tests, and I believe it is so convoluted that there's really no empirical data that adds up to giving us the information that we should have. The first thing here I'd like to talk about is, we're going to have tracing and tracking, and I believe it's already implemented. Here we had a, one of our maintenance men where I live got, one of his neighbors got a positive test, and now he, I guess he was on the list, and she mentioned his name, and so now he's quarantined for two weeks. And so, I don't know how far they're going to take that out, but it could be a situation where you're going to have a large number of people, you know, if they use these particular tests. And that's my main complaint about this. These, several of these really don't do what they say they're going to do. The PCR test does not measure a virus. It measures a particle of a DNA, very inaccurate, 80% negatives and about 30% positives. And in the last couple of days, they had a university that tested 3,500 people and they had, they were all positive tests. It's almost impossible to have all positive tests.
And where was this, Doug?
Now, let's see here, if I can see it here. Florida Atlantic University, 100% positive on 3,500 tests. So, you know, the, the second test they give you after you take that one is a one called an ELIS test, and it is one that tests for antibodies. And it's a seriology test. It has, it's not as bad as that one, but it all tests as, as your, your antibodies, okay? It doesn't mean that either one of those tests is actually testing for the specific COVID-19 virus. Now, I, you know, I'm not a scientist, but I read a lot of scientific material, and that's a problem for me, if they're trying to find something that they can't identify or specifically say under science that it's an actual virus that's causing all this stuff. So, the next thing I wanted to bring up here is that the, I saw a discussion from a city council in Collin, Texas. The city council there was discussing the new requirements put out on 511 on how they're counting cases. And I was astounded with that one because it particularly was, it really didn't make sense to start with, but I printed out the PowerPoint that this poor lady from the Health Department or part of the Health Department of that county, and this is the revised thing that they had on her PowerPoint. And so she went through it, so they were going to do new cases definition, okay? And basically it goes to, it's a probable case, new case definition for deaths. So you have two criteria they're measuring here. They give you, they have a color-coded thing on how you plug it into their system and tell, it tells you how it works. And then they get down to the nitty-gritty here, and they tell you what the current case definition, so if you have somebody here in this room tests for positive on a test, the tracers and trackers will get that person after they get the test, and they will have them tell you everywhere they've been. And then let's just say you have 15 people in their circle of influence, and it says it's a PCR test again with the, with the swab, and there's about seven, those are about 15 people. They don't even test these people on the first part of this, okay? Within 14 days, not a case. They don't count those people as a case until they get asymptomatic. The person up here may not even be symptomatic. Now, these are the new rules, okay? There's the person that's got a positive, not showing any symptoms with same number of people these, and his people that he was involved with, and they don't, also do not count the case, and they do not test these people either. But yet they count them as the actual case number-wise for how many cases. Now, this is what the problem is.
You're about 30 seconds out, Doug.
You have one person that's positive, and you have 15 or 16 more that they're counting. Now, you know, I'm not the smartest bulb in the socket, but I mean, that's how the explosion on these counts are coming up, and that's not, there's more to it than this even. The death, the deaths part of it they're counting is the same way. So you have somebody that dies down there, and it's, if they just think they've died from COVID, it doesn't matter really what, what the death certificate says initially, they're going to plug COVID in there above anything else, and they may have had heart trouble, they may have had, you know, whatever. So, the only thing that these people were worried about...
Doug, your, your time is up, sir.
Okay. The only thing that these people were worried about at that city council meeting on how it was going to embarrass them if they had to describe this to the public, you know? So I think we need to rethink what we're doing here because there's a lot more to this than meets the eye. And I think if I was the one that was considering doing what we're going to do here Thursday, that I would want to have all the information from all the sources that you could actually find.
Thank you.
And really have a lot more information to make your decision with.
Thank you.
Get it out there.
Thank you for doing that. Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Leah Parker.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am a registered nurse and a naturopath. I have lived in Branson and chose to raise my children and grandchildren here, and we love this town. It is our home. The reason I'm here tonight is that I am concerned about the masks deal that we are voting on or that we have given you guys the decision-making for us. And why I'm concerned is not for people to wear masks, it's because of what I am seeing, people coming to me that are forced to wear masks, that have headaches, they no longer feel good. They, they're, not everyone, because not everyone's genetics are the same, and everyone is going to be affected differently. I am concerned that we are taking this, because I have studied Dr. Keri Mullis extensively for his, the creator of polymerase chain reaction, and he passed away last year, and he said emphatically, "It is never to be used for diagnostics because it's impossible to isolate the entire viral sequence." So, you can only test for fragments after amplification, which it's not to be used for diagnostics. And when you are looking at people that are passing away, are these people passing away? I'm not saying there's not a COVID-19, I'm saying we don't have an accurate testing for that. And with adults, I think that at this point in our lives, that we should have a choice living in America as freedom to, business owners should say, have the choice to decide whether or not. I mean, I've worn a mask as a nurse, and I'll tell you, it's, it's not as healthy as people would think. They get dirty, there's viruses there. I've seen other people do tests where they test the amount of the carbon dioxide, and it's way above the, the level that is good for your body. So I'm concerned on the other end. Yes, we're adults, we should know if you're sick, stay home. And yes, there's going to be people that might not do that, but I think as a town that we are a tourist town, and people are not going to want to come to a town and, and have to wear a mask, they're just not. That's the way, I mean, I've heard it over and over. My husband has a business here, and we have chosen to make this our home, and we love it, and we don't want to have to go somewhere else. But I am concerned with the health of the businesses and also the health of the people. And I think that freedom is freedom, and we should all take into consideration that, yes, we have all heard lots of different things, but when we're making a decision for an entire town, we need to make sure that the God that we prayed to, that we are, we are, will be held accountable. And I have prayed before I came here, and I truly believe that we're in a very tough situation here, but if people were dropping dead from COVID-19 in Branson without any other symptoms, we would know about it. But you, we don't have an accurate testing. And, and if you haven't read about Keri Mullis, I think you should take the time to do that. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
For the record, could you just state your address? I didn't want to interrupt you.
124 Spluff Drive, Walnut Shade, Missouri.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you wouldn't mind, before you go from the microphone...
Yes, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
We're all trying to help each other.
I understand, believe me.
Was there enough wine?
I, I committed my life to trying to help people.
I figured you'd know how to do that if anybody would.
Well, I'll tell you what.
You said it out.
I don't typically use this type, but now that I'm a natural, I use other things that are actually not as toxic. It's all right.
Thank you, very much. Madam Clerk, do we have another speaker?
Yes, we do. Kimberly Vaughn.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Vaughn, 380 Bluebird, Marion Woods. Last month, I came here to discuss banning the sale and display of Confederate memorabilia within our family-friendly entertainment district. I gave members of the board and the mayor historical contacts from experts and examples of bans led by people I thought they'd respect, you know, military and congressmen. With the exception of two members, this board, the mayor, and other city officials chose inaction, evasion, tokenism, denial, and even the seeding of misinformation as the mayor claimed he didn't recognize anyone as being local. Like Nazi symbolism, Confederate memorabilia is the epitome of subjugation, murder, and the oppression of millions, full stop. Anything to the contrary has been proven to be the teachings of the Confederates' lost cause narrative that has been perpetuated by those who have either had the privilege of not being oppressed or those who are actively continued, actively seeking to continue the oppression. The sale of Confederate symbolism is abhorrent. Can you imagine a couple with active ties to the Nazis coming to set up shop on 76 to sling Nazi memorabilia under the guise of celebrating their heritage, would the mayor and the members of the board still choose to turn their heads? Confederate memorabilia belongs in a museum, like its counterpart Nazi memorabilia. The mayor, the Board of Aldermen, and the city's planning and zoning board have the power to prevent any type of business, sale, or display of any items within any district they so choose. They have proven this by amending zoning regulations to prevent strip clubs, sex shops, and medicinal cannabis dispensaries from the entertainment district. When presented with new facts and new information, it is imperative as an evolving human that you change your opinion accordingly. You are being given the chance to do what is right, and I promise you that myself and others will continue to show up to every meeting to remind you of what and who you are protecting until either you have a change of heart or are simply so embarrassed by your blatant protection of a racist symbol that you choose to act and amend zoning regulations to adhere to our community's so-called values. With seven to nine million visitors each year, Branson needs to be a welcoming community to all people, and right now that is just not the case. This store and their merchandise are not only a stain on our town and your careers at this point, but also a clear statement of where your morals or lack thereof lie. I'd like to state that the time is always right to do what is right. Please ban the sale and display of Confederate memorabilia within Branson's entertainment district, with the exception of museums. Thank you.
Clock, it didn't work.
She's finished. Thank you.
Clock wasn't showing up.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. That's because, I was just a little bit...
Clock wasn't...
Thank you, ma'am. Got to put my glasses on.
No, mayor. I'll, we will make sure it's up this time. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Kelsey Allen.
I'm Kelsey Allen, 163 Country Ridge Way, Branson, Missouri. All right. Small victory when most of the Confederate flags came down at Dixie Outfitters, all applause for that right there. However, we noticed there's nowhere on the agenda about banning Confederate memorabilia in the entertainment district. Why is that? You already know, or you're already aware, that's happening right in the middle of this city, which brings me to the next question. Is that what you support? Right now, we are in the middle of a civil rights movement. We know it's unconstitutional to shut this place down. So what is constitutional? Banning Confederate memorabilia in the entertainment district, with the exception of museums. This ensures another business of this nature can't pop up later down the road. The definition of anti-racism includes beliefs, actions, movements, and policies adopted or developed to oppose racism. With that being said, are you going to allow the City of Branson to be a safe haven for racists? Or can our community unify our efforts to stand with anti-racism? As Kimberly stated as well, the time is always right to do what is right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Gunn.
Wen.
Fine, sorry.
My name is Teresa Wen, and I'm from 314 North Fork, Branson, Missouri. So today I will be talking about the protest on June 26th, and I would like to talk about my experiences about it. On June 26th, I went to a protest to close Dixie Outfitters down or to get rid of Confederate memorabilia. And I was, again, I would like to talk about what I've noticed about the peaceful protest. One thing I've noticed is that most of the people supporting Dixie Outfitters and the Confederate flag are not wearing masks, even though there is a pandemic. However, most of us, the protesters, were wearing masks. Another thing I noticed that were, there were at least five counter protesters that brought guns and assault rifles to the protest. I also noticed that a lot of the counter protesters were insulting the protesters and began to threaten people of color, so the protesters had to hide people of color behind them to protect them, and I was included, even though I don't think it was at me, but I think it was more at our black friends. However, some of us, the protesters, were shouting insults as well to start a fight with the counter protesters. Fortunately, the other protesters would quiet them down to prevent fights from starting and maybe have the police against the protests, protesters. The most interesting thing that I noticed were that the protesters began shouting the Hail Mary prayer. But as they were shouting, the counter protesters began cranking up their patriotic music to cover up all of us praying for all of us. There were a couple of other things that I noticed about the protest, that I, that I noticed about the protest or I may have not noticed about the protest, but these were the most noticeable for me. If Dixie Outfitters is trying to promote Southern heritage, faith, family, and freedom, I believe their supporters aren't proving those values. If cranking up patriotic music to cover people praying is supposed to promote faith, then that's not very convincing. If Dixie Outfitters supporters are bringing, are bringing guns to scare the protesters from expressing their freedom of speech, then that's not a convincing argument either. If threatening violence against people of color in front of tourists with family that were driving in front of the protest is supposed to promote that Dixie Outfitters is supposed to be family-friendly, then I believe that is also not a convincing argument that the store is promoting family values. I believe, as well as many others, that Dixie Outfitters is promoting hatred and racism rather than the values they have been boasting about. Branson is already known for that viral racist video that promoted racism and the Confederate flag, and was, and she was also supporting Dixie Outfitters. I, and many others have said before, don't want Branson to be a safe haven for racists and hatred. If Branson wants to be known as a family-friendly town, then it either has to close Dixie Outfitters. But I also know that's not constitutional, so I feel like we might as well ban Confederate memorabilia. Thank you.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
Dylan Oka?
A moment before we get started.
He's going to clean the microphone off.
You touched the microphone. That's all right. That's all right, don't worry.
Now we're getting our $10 per meeting out of you.
Who does?
I'm going to loosen one of these up.
You're going to be prepared.
All right, cool. All right. My name is Dylan Ochoa. I live at 215 College U Drive in Hollister, Missouri. I've, I am a lifelong citizen of Branson, born and raised, went to Seaview, I'm still here, so I've never left. That being said, I do care very much about not just the people in this community, but the community as a whole, the people we bring in, and I think it serves in the best interest of everybody that we protect their well-being at any cost. When I say this, I don't mean to be rude, I mean to be bold, because this is how it is. In our country, the government is run by the people and for the people. For the people means that the government works for us to serve our best interests. Everyone up here works for me, as well as everybody in this audience, and you all have a duty to serve and protect all of us. That being said, I firmly believe it's in the best interest of everybody that we do mandate provisions that will require the usage of not just face masks, but social distancing in our town. Branson is a Petri dish for COVID-19. According to Branson Tourism Center, we have approximately 7.2 million visitors in our town each year. While I can't say how many we've had this year so far, I can say business has been booming in the last few weeks. I work in hospitality currently, and we are taking provisions to ensure that we are safe. However, we're not taking precautions to cause our customers to come in and make sure that not just their safety is protected, but that ours is as well. We have to wear masks, we have a glass covering in front of our desks, but I have several customers who will step to the side, come face-to-face with me and talk, no mask on them. That is not something that is safe, and it's not something that is going to stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus. For everyone here, everyone, if this is being livestreamed, just to know, being asked to wear a mask is not a retraction of liberties. You are not under a communist system when your government asks you to take precautions to prevent the spread of a virus, which, mind you, is not even a year old. We hardly know anything about it, it's better to be safe than sorry. Being asked to be considerate of others' safety in the wake of a pandemic that me, my friends, the city, and my family have never seen before is not a retraction of liberties. These precautions are vital to contain... containing and stopping the spread of this virus. So I call on all of you, because you're all here to serve the best interest of this community, its people and the people who travel to it. When you neglect the safety and interests of the people who you've chosen to serve, you've not just betrayed the people and your city, but your country. So I call on all of you to make the right decision, require masks in public, require these provisions, and keep Branson safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your help. Adam Clerk.
Josh Frakel.
Hi, my name is Josh Frakel. I live at 301 Woodland Hills Drive, Walnut Shade, Missouri. I'm here speaking upon banning Confederate memorabilia in Branson, and I didn't write it down, but COVID-19 precautions. I was at the first protest in Branson, and my experience was kind of weird with it. I very much believe that we should ban the selling of merchandise, considering the Confederate flag in it, or Confederate flag at all. At the first protest I was at, there were multiple police officers at the Branson Scenic Railway, and there were two starting out, and then about three or four came along and went, and they were kind of staring at us. But then around the third protest, I was actually at work, but I saw that they were there, supporting the protesters, but why weren't they there the first two times? I found that very odd and off-putting personally, and that it kind of really upset me. As far as these protests go with Dixie Outfitters, I do not believe we should shut them down, because that is unconstitutional, like they already said. But I do think we need to ban Confederate flag memorabilia in Branson. If we're going to call it a community that serves the public and a community that's family friendly, why are we supporting that if we're not going to support it in our school districts or anything else? Thank you.
Adam Clerk.
Adele Groat.
Adele Groat, 471 Table Rock Heights, Hollister, Missouri. Thank you for allowing me to remove my mask while I speak. Mr. Mayor, Board of Aldermen, staff, and guests, we've been living in a time where unruly crowds and violence command our attention on a daily basis. Since the last Alderman meeting of June 23rd, I've viewed two videos involving the Branson Police Department. One video was from a news source showing a great deal of footage of a protest occurring on 76 Country Boulevard in regard to a local business, and the other, a social media post dealing with a nail salon patron in Branson causing a disturbance over wearing a mask. The Branson Police Force in both instances displayed the highest standards in deportment, service, and professionalism in dealing with both of these extremely agitated situations. I wish to commend the force for living out their values to strive to provide in conducting themselves with integrity, compassion, and accountability when it would be so easy to not do so. I would also specifically like to commend Chief Matthews, as he was present in both of these videos. I'm very appreciative to be a citizen of this county to watch an officer and a chief lead by example, as personal leadership is fundamental in providing positive teamwork and structure. Thank you, Chief.
Adam Clerk, do we have another speaker? Thank you, Adele, for cleaning that down. Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, did you say we have another speaker?
No, Your Honor, that's.
Okay, thank you. Well, that concludes the public comment sections. Thank you for coming. And the portion of the meeting is open, and people can talk about the subjects. We try to keep it, as you see, as short and succinct as possible to allow free discussion. At this point, we begin our regular meeting, and I'd like to share with you a responsibility that I've taken on, which is to serve, under state law, to take care of the ordinances of our city, and the state law requiring or relating to our city are complied with. Under one of our ordinances, Branson Municipal Code 2-64, I am tasked with the responsibility of being the presiding officer of the board, and am required to preserve strict order and decorum at all the meetings of the board. Decorum is often defined by the dictionary as proprietary, and in good taste, in conduct or appearance. And one of the many definitions of order is a state of peace, freedom from confusion or unruly behavior, and respect for law and proper authority. We've had, in the past, abstentions. The citizens of Branson elected us to make decisions on matters, policy matters, and we make those decisions by voting. We are obligated to vote unless a conflict of interest prevents us from doing so. The common law in the state of Missouri supports this. Although I cannot force any member of the board to cast a vote, and no member can be required to cast a vote, I do have the ability to control the order and decorum of these meetings. As a result, I'm announcing, under my authority, to preserve order and decorum at these meetings, that any abstention by any member of the board during the meeting can be recast as a no vote. Thank you. Consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the audience would like to see brought down from the consent agenda for additional questions or comments?
Got to be able to breathe. Marsha Skemper Carlock, 113 Wingfoot Drive, also Director of Tannen Hills Community Library. I'd like to have item number 5826 brought down. And do I address that now?
No.
Why?
When we get into it, we'll go through. It'll be brought down to the regular agenda.
Okay.
We'll vote first on the consent agenda. The request, does it require any action? On our part? The request is made, and we just simply draw it down?
No, we just.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other items to be brought down? Okay, at this time, Madam Clerk, would you?
We do have a staff request that item number three be removed from consent and brought down also, please, if somebody would.
5825?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. All right, any others? Then if you wouldn't mind, Madam Clerk, to go through the rest of the consent agenda?
Your Honor, the items on the consent agenda are as follows. Approve of the Board of Aldermen minutes of the June 18, 2020 study session, the June 23, 2020 regular meeting, July 27, 2020 special meeting, acknowledge receipt of minutes of the Planning Commission regular meeting of May 5, 2020, Planning Commission study session of June 2, 2020, Planning Commission regular meeting of June 2, 2020. And final reading of Bill number 5827, and ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 28 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to Administrative and Supervisory Committees. Your Honor, that concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
The floor is open for a motion approving the items on the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second's been made. Please vote on the consent agenda. There are five Aldermen present. The vote is five yeses, passes. We'll go in order on the regular agenda with item number three is the first item, which is 5825. And Madam Clerk, would you provide the introduction to this item?
Your Honor, this is the first, or final reading of Bill number 5825, and ordinance approving the modification of the energy performance loan with Central Bank of Branson.
Begin with a staff report from Jamie Rousch.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is the modification for the loan for the energy performance. The simple request was that we had to change the date. As last board meeting, we were not able to do a double read. So the interest rate date is the only thing that changed, and it changed to July 15, and the bank will honor the same rate. So we are thankful for that, and I'll be able to answer any questions, hopefully.
Any, okay. You've heard the final reading of Bill 5825. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Any Alderman wishing to speak to this matter? Mr. Simmons?
I'd just like to thank the bank for extending their timeframe there so that we could use the proper procedure and not hurry this through. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other comments? All right. Let's see, from a... We have to have the amendment approved of changing the date. So at this point in time, I need an Alderman to make a motion at the top of your page in your agenda. It states, "Your Honor, I move to amend Bill..." Okay.
Your Honor, I move to amend Bill 5825, replacing Exhibit 1 of the ordinance with revised Exhibit 1 dated July 15, 2020.
Do I have a second for the amendment?
Second.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Any Alderman?
Your Honor, just for clarification, that amendment that's being replaced is behind your staff report. If you did not catch that, it's been included in your item, and that's what's being replaced. So it gets a corrected date on it. It's a new bank document.
Okay. Dated July 15?
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Please vote on the amendment. There are five present. Yes, five. It's approved. I'm assuming no additional amendments to this bill? The result stands. Milton, yes. Whitish, yes. C, yes. Skane, yes. And Simmons, yes. All right. Now we go to the item pulled down from the consent agenda.
We voted on the amendment. Now we'll need to vote on the bill as amended, as a final reading of that bill, please.
All right, thank you.
It would be right at the bottom.
Yeah, please vote on the bill as amended. Bottom of the page. You're voting again.
We're voting now.
Yeah. You voted on the amendment first, and now you're voting on the bill as amended.
All in favor, press one.
Yeah. Is there?
Mayor, I have four registered responses at this time.
You just got another one.
Thank you.
There are five present. Yes, five. The bill is passed as amended. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now we go to the item pulled down from the consent agenda, which was Bill 5826.
So, Your Honor, this is item number four, for those who are falling wrong. This is the final reading of Bill number 5826, an ordinance approving the contract with Branson Housing Authority pertaining to the transfer of ownership of property from the Branson Housing Authority to the city of Branson.
You've heard the reading of the bill. Do we have anyone from staff wishing to speak to this?
I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, all right. So you've heard the final reading of Bill 5826. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second made. Now, anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Told you we'd get there, Marshall.
The last time that you met on this issue, my question was, is this going to be a public parking lot? And I thought that the language in the contract was going to be changed to reflect that. I don't read any changes in there. As I pointed out the last time, there is a parking issue to begin with at Houston Public Library, Branson Library, the Tannen Hills Library. A number of our thrift shop workers parked their car along that street, and because of the slope and the amount of traffic that we get, they would greatly appreciate having a lot where they could park their cars more safely and cross the street. I don't see that changed in the language. I'm looking for clarification.
I can respond. Thank you, Mayor. We started, actually, we finished up the negotiations on this, Marsha, back in November 21 of last year. The original version of that agreement between us and the housing authority, if you look at paragraph four, which is, I think, where this is referencing, it originally said that the residents would have the quote-unquote exclusive use of the parking lot. Okay? We've changed that, because all that this agreement is, is we're going to transfer some money, demo a building, put a parking lot in. Paragraph four in this version now says that the residents will have the right to use the parking lot. It doesn't say that they have the exclusive right to use the parking lot. So what I would tell you is it's currently open-ended. So if you read further in paragraph four, it talks about us entering into a lease agreement with the housing authority. What's contemplated with that follow-up lease is we are going to have that written in there with them, so that it's not just exclusive to residents of the housing authority. It's open-ended today, so that when we do enter in an agreement with the housing authority, we give that opportunity to the surrounding public, if you will.
And you anticipate at that time that it'll have signs saying public parking are available to the public?
I don't know what the answer to that question would be, unfortunately. That's something we can discuss internally. Again, that lease will have to be memorialized, since it is technically our property. I guess we could put signage up there, but that'll be a conversation probably with, as I look at our blue-masked Assistant City Administrator that we'll have to have internally in the city.
I think he knows my name.
Yes.
Thank you. So I'll look forward to that coming up again.
Are we ready to vote on 5826? Is there any questions from the Alderman, or any?
Alderman has a question.
All right, Alderman Milton?
When this came up last time, I was, on the surface, I was questioning the amount of money in the process, and Alderman Simmons reminded me that there was a lot of history involved that I was unaware of. So I received some history that I wanted to share with the board before we vote on this. 1959, Housing Authority became a public subdivision in the city of Branson. November 66, City of Branson entered a cooperative agreement with the Housing Authority. August 14, HUD notified Branson Housing Authority Board that the Branson Housing Authority failed to provide the needed paperwork for the purchase in 2000 of the two houses to be used for future parking. HUD notified the Branson Housing Authority in 2007 that they needed the paperwork to purchase this property for the two houses for future parking. That same year, the Executive Director of Branson Housing Authority passed away, and the needed paperwork requested by HUD was not able to be located by the new Executive Director. Early '16, Mayor Best approached Jamie asking to reach out to HUD, as the Branson Housing Authority was at risk of losing the HUD funding due to HUD's review and public housing assistance systems score being troubled or substandard in the financial area. February 16, conference called with HUD officials to discuss the situation and to receive background on the subject. on the subject, history. The Branson Housing Authority received two loans to purchase the homes and land behind their current location in order to demo the homes and make a parking lot, so that the residents and employees would have a place to park instead of parking on the streets. With ongoing maintenance costs, the Housing Authority, as well as paying the debt service for the loan, the loan was not used for the purpose it was originally meant for. As a result, the Branson Housing Authority received the troubled standard score from HUD. May 6, 2016, the Board of Aldermen discussed this at a study session. Budget and Finance Committee Jamie explained the situation with the intent to take this to the Board of Aldermen for approval to assist HUD's request. November 2016, recovery agreement between City of Branson, HUD, and the Housing Authority was approved by the Branson Board of Aldermen. City of Branson to work with the Housing Authority to comply with HUD's request for financial stability. October 18, 2018, Branson Housing Authority received HUD's approval for disposition of the property, which was required in order to sell the property to the city. September of 19, study session with the Board, received the estimate from the city engineer, $140,000, to demolish the two houses on West Pacific and construct parking lot for 23 spaces. February 2020, HUD approved the move forward with agreement, City of Branson. February 2020, Housing Authority approved to move forward with agreement. We are at this point, after lengthy process, several party reviews, two separate attorneys, outside counsel, individuals from HUD, individuals from Branson Housing Authority, and the city of Branson. So to summarize, the Housing Authority has already been provided two loans to demolish these buildings and pave the parking lot, and they use that money for other purposes, if I'm reading the history correctly. In addition to that, the city has paid $59,700 to supplement the Housing Authority since 2013, and now we're facing this expense of $140,000, so it'll be a total of $200,000. I'm confident that the city wants and needs the services from the Housing Authority. It appears to me the city owes it to the Housing Authority to assist them in getting their financial house in order and not just simply throwing money at it. I would like to see, I would like to postpone this, visit with the Housing Authority, try to get to the root of what's causing these financial stresses, instead of just throwing money. At this time, with COVID and our finances, I think we need to be extra prudent on where we're spending the money. So I'm voting no on this bill, and would like for the city to assist the Housing Authority's financial plan.
This source of your information, Mr. Milton?
I'm sorry?
The source of your information.
The source?
Uh-huh.
John Manning.
You said you did the research. I was wanting to know what?
John Manning provided me this information.
Okay.
Sounded like a challenge there, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm just verifying the source of the information.
Don't make it up.
At this point, we've called for a vote. We've heard from one alderman. Any other aldermen?
I would like to ask questions of John, if he has time or stand. Is it true that the Housing Department has been paid for this already, and they took the money and used it for other purposes?
The Housing Authority took out two loans, and I beg your pardon, it's hard to wear a mask and glasses at the same time, but the Housing Authority took out two loans, and we created this timeline for y'all to see the history and the event and the items that went along with it. They took out two loans, and then circumstances happened, and unfortunately, the Executive Director passed away, and those two loans were, it is my understanding, the original intent was for they purchased those two properties, and they wanted to do the development and those kind of things, but the process happened that he passed away, and then the new Executive Director came in, and unfortunately, some of those items were lost and couldn't find them and those kind of things. And eventually, how it happened is we stepped in to try to help them get things in line after HUD came out and did the review. So they took out the loans. We did not give them that money. They took those loans out, and that debt was on them.
Are they in good standing with HUD because of all this?
Currently, through a long process, they are in good standing as long as we can complete some of these items, and this is one of the items that was on their list.
My question would go back to what Larry said. Are we having to come up with $140,000 because they took the money that was intended to be used for a specific purpose of purchasing that property and did not do it?
I can't tell you what their intent was for the property. I only know that they did take a loan out to purchase those two properties, and they purchased the properties. Unfortunately, I can't tell you what the intent was after that, but I just know that we're here to try to help them get out of some of this and help them rectify the situation with HUD. And we've talked to HUD ourselves. We've been in meetings with the Housing Authority, with HUD, and ourselves, and this has been a long process.
I get that. I'm still going to get to the point, is that property purchased already in the name of the Housing Department?
Yes, the property is purchased under Branson Housing Authority, not the city of Branson.
Okay. And this $140,000 specifically for what now?
The, well, for this year, it's $90,000, and next year, there was some more allocated. This year, their current loan payoff for the two is just shy of $40,000 currently. So $40,000 of that would be to take over the property. It then would become the property of the city of Branson. The rest of the $90,000 for this year would then go to demolishing the property and begin to preparing it. And then next year, our intent would be to paving it, and then, according to the engineering designs, putting the 23 spots in and making it look nicer and getting those people having to park off the streets.
Okay, so this property becomes property of the city of Branson?
Yes, sir, it will.
Mr. Simmons?
So for clarity, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just two questions, Jamie.
Yes, sir.
Don't I remember that about four years ago, give or take, that HUD greatly decreased the funding that came to the Branson Housing Authority from HUD?
I'm just talking off the top of my head now.
They, they came in, it was a while back, so I'm going off of memory here.
Maybe longer than that.
So they came in, and they did this extensive review as a result of him passing away and some things happening, and so they did an extensive review, and unfortunately, as this timeline says, they got some pretty poor marks as a result. So they laid out the steps that needed to happen in an effort to get them back in good standings. I don't recall if they reduced their funding at that time. I know they said they were going to pull their funding if they did not complete these steps.
My memory, I think, was, and may be faulty here, but I think it was longer ago than that. I think it was before that happened.
That could be, and I can do that research and go back in my records and look for that specific item and let you know, certainly.
And does, does the city appoint all of the Housing Authority Board members?
I don't know that answer. I'll leave it up to-
We just appointed one in the last meeting or two.
Yes.
So do we appoint them all?
Yes. I think so, but they, they send us the name recommendation.
So we do have a pretty strong link and some control over that.
Certainly.
And our relationship with HUD, to me, is very important. That's a type of housing that was very badly needed at the time it went in, in 1959. It's even worse type of housing needed now. And so our relationship with HUD should be a bright thing, looking forward to them helping us more in the future, as well as this individual case.
Alderman Milton?
Yeah, just for clarity. Jim, in these notes, it does say, "The Branson Housing Authority received two loans to purchase the homes and the land behind their current location in order to demo the homes and make the parking lot."
Okay.
So I guess, I don't want to-
The loan, my intent was the loans were not ours, they were theirs. They took the loans themselves.
And the point I was raising was, they already received the loans to purchase the land and to pave the parking lot. Right?
Yeah, I can say, based on the timeline, that would be fine. That would be fine to say, sure.
So instead of us just handing over $140,000 to do this, I think it would be prudent for us to maybe ask questions, see if we can, see what the hole is in their, HUD is saying that they're not showing any financial stability.
One of the issues is their debt, that debt against that land, and I think that's the, what we're trying to accomplish right now for them is removing that debt burden from them as a result. They have the debt on those loans, and they don't have the wherewithal to take care of that property. So several years ago, our city went over there and did a community day of caring, and we tried to help clean that up, but those, that land is in, I'm just going to say, dire straits, and so they need help to take care of that debt so that we can, we can step in and help them move forward with that property. They're all parking on the streets, and so we brought this before you today, because it has been a long process, and we have worked with HUD, and it doesn't, it's not a short timeline to get through some of the government processes and stuff, but we did do that in an effort because HUD requested it to help them out. So this is just trying to accomplish what was requested of us so that we can move forward and maybe help them advance in the future.
Yeah, it's been going on for over 20 years, right? Because it says that Housing Authority did not, excuse me, HUD did not receive the paperwork in 2000 that was requested, and then again in 2007. So this has been going on for a long time, and again, I'd like to see if there's other solutions other than running $140,000.
Mr. Mayor, any question? Jamie, thank you for answering the, I have two questions. Is this amount of money to bring them into compliance, are they out of compliance with any HUD regulations at all that we're aware of?
They have cleaned up some of the regulations quite a bit, and this was one of the items on their, I'll call it a cleanup sheet, for lack of a better word. But HUD did give me a copy of that years ago, gave me a copy of what it was going to take to get them back in full compliance, and this is one of the last pieces, I can tell you that. So they've made great strides, I will tell you that, as, from where they came, and this is one of the last items on their checklist. And we talked to HUD quite a bit, and she's, she's saying, when is this going to get done? And she's asking me that, and she asks me that quite a bit. So that's, this is one of the last items on their checklist.
Okay, just a couple more things. Are we covering bad debt? Is that what we're saying? They have a bad debt with HUD that HUD wants us to cover before they convey the land?
I wouldn't, I don't think I'd call it bad debt, because they're still making their payments. So the only thing I would call bad debt is when they're unable to make their payments. And right now, they're doing what they can to make those payments, so I would not call it bad debt. I would call it a strain on their financial situation, because they have to make those payments. Does that make sense?
I get that. And then the last thing is that after this is done, the title for that land will be conveyed back to Branson?
Yes, the Branson, the property.
We will own-
We will take care of that, and we will own the property.
I got it.
And then, as Chris said, we'll try to go into a lease with the Housing Authority to help move forward, certainly.
Any other comments or questions? Basically, as Bill and I were just, we're really buying the property, is what we're doing.
That's absolutely correct.
All right. Are you ready to vote? Four yes, no, one, passes. Milton, no. Whitish, yes. C, yes. Skane, yes. Simmons, yes. Thank you. All right, now we're ready to move on to item six. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is a resolution approving a special event permit for the 47th Autumn Days Arts, Crafts, and Music Festival.
I have a staff report from Joe Hornicle.
Mayor, members of the board, good evening.
Good evening.
This is the 47th annual time for the Arts and Crafts Festival, as mentioned in the title. It's proposed to be held this year between Tuesday, September 15th, through Saturday, September 19th. However, they are asking to close down the area, as you can see in the graphic on the screen, starting Monday or a day before the event on September 14th. This is the same area they've utilized the last several years, with the majority of their vendors located in the Allberry parking lot. They are proposing to close a small portion of North Commercial between the alley behind Dix 5 and 10, and then to Atlantic Street. And that just simply allows for more display area and the proposed food court. They also do have a stage located north of Atlantic Street, where on the top of the graphic on the screen, so there will be a small area that will need to be closed as well, but Atlantic Street is proposed to remain open. I know that's been a question in past years. They are anticipating approximately 100 artisans at this time, however, as we all know, things are changing, and that could change as well. Staff has done the review of this request and have noted, while there will be assistance with barricades, cones, bleachers, and trash cans, no cost to the city have been identified. As a result, staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Heard the staff report. Do I have a motion adopting this resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this item?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Obviously, you've consulted with Matt Trokey and his attorney's firm there at, on Atlantic Street, and he's okay with all this, because that was a discussion you alluded to.
Yeah, in past years, they did have concerns about Atlantic Street being closed, but then the DBBA made modifications to their plan, and ever since, they haven't had any issues that have been brought up.
What dates are we talking about one more time?
Again, it's September 15th, which is a Tuesday, until September?
Seventeenth?
19th, which is a Saturday. That's correct.
One question, is there a drop-dead date on this, Joel, in case I can't fill any of this thing up? What are the contingencies out there?
We haven't put any contingencies on this. All the things that can be done by staff, I mean, they're, they're pulled together shortly there before the event itself, so we'll continue to be in contact with Jessica with the DBA, DBBA, leading up to the event, just to see if they're going to continue on or not.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from aldermen? Five aldermen present, yes, it's approved. Madam Clerk, item number seven, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5828, an ordinance approving an easement for a right-of-way for recreational trails, trailhead, and parking located on the preserved property, and authorize the mayor to execute said easement with the Liza Stinger Foundation 75% and the Falkrey Partners LLC 25%.
Begin with a staff report from Keith Francis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is for a trail easement out there, just on the backside of the Preserve Development. City adopted a planned development in 2013 for this development. Staff has continued to communicate and talk with the developers as they develop additional phases of it, and they have dedicated a trail easement, a trailhead, and a parking area for the new trails. At this time, the trails will not be built or anything or constructed. They're more than likely going to be a natural type of a trail out there, you know, base material or wood chips or something like that, as, as nature would. But the red segment is segment one. If you look at the legal descriptions on here, the blue area is, the blue line is segment two of the trails. And in the future, they will connect up some other dots in our trail master plan. Staff recommends approval, and we're glad to answer any questions about it.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 5828. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Yes, Marshall Houghton.
Marshall Houghton, 106 Rose O'Neil. Keith, quick question. So what's the most recent trail before this one to be instituted in Branson? Do you have that answer? Do you have that answer?
The one down at Sunset, was the last one I remember.
Okay.
It was a concrete trail, concrete asphalt, Sunset Park.
Gotcha. And when you say the, the master trail plan, was that the one that was originally in place, the original 76 project, and it's been modified since then, or?
I think it was first initiated in 03.
I'm sorry, Keith, we can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think the, the original Trail Master Plan was initiated in 03, way before my time, so.
Cool, just curious, thanks.
Time for the alderman.
Keith, question.
Did we get a motion and a second?
Yes.
Yes, sir. The anticipated cost to the city of Branson to do this, do we have any anticipated cost?
Just, just the easement, it's a sum of, I believe it says $10 on the legal description here.
Okay, moving forward from this, any increased cost for us to maintain this so that we've got to fight with Jamie over?
It depends on what type of material, what type of material we put down for the trail, whether we use aggregate base material or something like that, then the labor to put it down.
Cost negligible, and I can't even talk to this man.
Probably not right now at this time. I mean, the trail basically follows one of our sewer lines that goes down the valley there, then the blue line represents another sewer main that goes up that area, so we're basically following our sewer easement. It's pretty much cleared already, and people do walk down through there right now, it's just kind of a bare path.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the aldermen?
Mayor?
Yes.
What are those structures there, at the, the green part of the trailhead there?
It's a, it's a different property. It's not on this part of the property. I don't know exactly what the structure is.
What are those roads, Keith, that tee off of each other? Is that Fall Creek and?
That's Green Mountain Drive right there in, in front of the, the apartment buildings, then that's Animal Safari Road down there.
Yeah, that's what that is, that's the old Animal Safari.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Ready to vote? Five aldermen present, yes, five, passed. Go to item number eight. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction to this item?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5829, an ordinance accepting the proposal of Central Salt LLC pertaining to the purchase of sodium chloride, rock salt and enhanced de-icer, and authorizing mayor to execute the contract.
Begin with a staff report from Keith Francis.
Mayor, members of the board, this is for our road salt for, for next winter for 2021. On May 18th, 2020, we went out for, or accepted bids for the road and ice control. For our streets, we bid out 250 tons of the regular sodium chloride, then we had 250 tons of the enhanced de-icer. The total bid not to exceed amount is $48,475. Funds have been allocated to 2021 budget for the street's operating budget. Recommend approval and we're glad to answer any questions.
Staff recommends approval, do I have a motion approving this bill?
So moved. Second?
There's a motion and a second to bill number 5828, first reading. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this matter?
Yes, sir, just one quick one. Keith, how much carryover in salt, sodium chloride, did we have from last year? Did we have quite a bit? Had we exhausted it?
I would say probably 60, 65% left from our last contract that we have not used yet.
Would it knock this down?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll top the salt barns, we'll top them off and fill them up on our existing contract if we had, if we need to, but right at the end of last winter, we ordered some more salt, so they're pretty full right now, so we shouldn't have to spend much more on this, this year's contract.
Thank you, bud.
Any other aldermen?
Good things.
Yeah, I've got one more. What's the shelf life, so to speak, on that?
What's that, Jamie?
The shelf life on the salt, yeah.
It'll last for several years. We just break it up, it'll kind of solidify, you know, in there, we just break it up the backhoe bucket, yep.
Has it been sitting long enough that we need to put sanitizer on it for the?
You're mad.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Ready to vote? Five aldermen present, yes, vote five, passed. Ready to go to item number nine. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction for this item.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5830, an ordinance amending the contract with Central Square Technologies pertaining to the purchase of an online module for employee self-service and authorizing mayor to execute the contract.
All right, we have a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. The next couple are basically add-ons to our operational software. This one is an employee self-portal, and really it's due to COVID and the shutdown that we have realized the need for this, and we reached out to our software company and they just gave us a really good deal on this, so it's about $3684, $3,684 to add this on, and what this would do is this would be allowed, we would no longer print like direct deposits, we wouldn't have to print them out, stuff them, physically hand them out, the employees would have the access to go on to this module, get their W2s, get their direct deposit slips, adjust their W4s, and it would alert us anytime changes have been made, but it would allow them the ability to go on and look at their, and get their history as well. We are recommending approval of this, and one item to note is as a result, this is really a result of a teleworking item. We are going and planning on submitting this for reimbursement as a part of the CARES Fund. We recommend approval of this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Heard the recommendation of staff, do I have a motion approving bill number 5830?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There's a second. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter?
Hi there, my name is Audrey Richards, 265 Buzz Street. I actually have a couple of technical questions. So about a year ago, y'all passed a bill to upgrade the servers to 2012, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we, generally speaking, yes, that's correct. We passed a bill to purchase Microsoft software, correct?
Okay, have y'all completed the upgrade yet?
We have completed all upgrades.
Okay, sweet.
However, this would not operate on those particular platforms.
Okay, so this is, so this is hosted by the Central Square Technologies?
Without getting into too many technical details for the sake of security of our network, it's hosted with another provider, correct?
Okay. I just have some concerns about, you know, the hosting of certain data with private companies because I was assuming that we were hosting it on our servers. Okay. I guess then my only other two questions I suppose would be, what is the duration of the software license? Is that just for like a year, or?
So this is an add-on to the license that we already have, they already passed the licensed software this past year, 2019, and it's a five-year contract.
Okay. And then I suppose the only other thing that I have in terms of like a technological question, so when it comes to, because I think y'all already have like the Navoline software, I believe is what it is, I don't know, I can't confirm that, but so has, like, has Central Square Technologies, have they like provided actual good technical support? Because my questions to them, whenever I was asking them, because you know, I read the agenda, I was trying to be prepared, it kind of gave me the runaround, and they're like, oh, well, we don't really care, so it kind of made me concerned as to the level of support and accuracy and efficacy and the, you know, stuff that they're, you know, willing to give to the city of Branson, because I got the impression that we were, at least I know I, as a citizen, was not considering important in my questions. So I would like to know just like the manner and like overall level of support. Are you guys comfortable with that, or?
So, Mayor, would you like me to take that? From the IT department's perspective and not the end user's perspective necessarily, I can tell you, Central Square, we're not, we're not completely happy with this company, to be completely transparent. However, their services, you know, they're online, they stay online, they meet our needs. This is a product that we've been using for many, many years, and it's extremely expensive and time-consuming and laborious to replace, and so we are, particularly, you know, especially in the times we have financially, we're going to be with the software for the next few years, and so we just don't see that in the roadmap. We have a lot of things to fund, and this is not one of them that is a top priority, even though, to answer your question straight, am I completely pleased as the IT director with this company? No, I'm not, just to be.
Okay, and I suppose in response to that, I would just ask the board and everybody to consider, you know, techno, like our technological infrastructure as a city is seriously important, and last year and to this day, I still don't believe that it's considered a priority when it should be. We have a lot of vulnerabilities. The 2012 software went end of life in February, the R2 went end of life in like, what, 2018? So, you know, it's almost, I don't want to call it an embarrassment, but you know, the lack of, of investment in the technological infrastructure that the city has is kind of, it worries me, and that's why every time something like this comes up, I want to stand up here and make sure that y'all understand that it is a priority, you know, because I, I worked for, for, you know, the Treasury Department, I understand how important technological infrastructure is whenever it comes to government, and I don't see that reflected in the priorities, and so that's my concern, especially I understand the need to fund things, whether that be the recycling center or whatever, I, I get that there are priorities, but I don't believe that, that this has been reflected. And so I suppose, especially whenever you're talking about something that the IT department is not necessarily happy with, because, you know, it meets the bare minimum standards of technically staying online and doing what it's supposed to do, even though it's a pain in the butt, you know, like, I mean, I think that, I think that the citizens of Branson, our taxpayer dollars should go to something that funds a little bit more than that, so that's my perspective. Thank you.
Audrey, if I might answer just really quickly to you, we are the end user, the finance department pretty much works with that software all the time, and the software has a list of people that they are to, allowed to talk to regarding the city of Branson, and if you're not on it, they're not allowed to address specific questions in nature, so that may have been why you got the runaround a little bit, I just wanted to address that really quickly. And I will say, Central Square bought out Navoline, Navoline bought out Sun Guard, Sun Guard HTE, those kind of things, and that happens, but they have upgraded us quite a bit, and as a result of some of these things that we're bringing, we're, I'm pretty happy with the product that they're bringing to us to help us move into the future as far as being online, integrating and giving our citizens the opportunity to become online and those kind of things, and I think you'll see that in the next couple of items, but I did want to let you know that they may not have been doing that just because of you, but they have a list of people that they're only supposed to talk to regarding our, our contract, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I understand confidentiality and stuff. My question was more of the general nature because I was under the impression it was going to be operating on the servers, and so I was simply just asking about compatibility issues, but that's not, that's not a good thing, so, yeah, that's it, and thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Are we ready to vote?
What, just, hold on a sec. Yeah, there's, I think Larry and I got some questions.
Chad, I know when we have talked about our internet and our security and that, do you agree with Audrey when she's saying that maybe some of the IT's request that with maybe some more funding, you would feel more confident with the security of our IT world? Because I know this was a hot issue when we were talking about, you know, all the companies and that were getting hacked, and cities were getting hacked, and ransomware and all that.
And, and it continues, certainly. Do I have concerns? Yes, I do. Do I think we're inherently insecure at this time? Not necessarily, no. Would I like to see us increase our security by purchasing some specific products that I think would help us be better prepared for those types of incidents that you described? 100%. And so I would say the board did do that last year, they took act, you all took action and funded multiple IT projects, and literally, they were on the agenda, the meeting that was canceled due, when this all first started, right, when COVID first started, they were due to be on that agenda and, and funded, presumably, assuming the board, you know, chose to do that, and so that got postponed. It is a top priority from the IT department's perspective, and it is on our list of capital for, for next year, and we'll be requesting that again. Does that answer your question?
So what we approved because of the interruption with COVID, we never funded it?
We actually didn't approve it. It was going to be on that for first reading and it never made it to you.
Okay.
And then all capital purchases and anything non-essential had to be stripped, and essentially we have to go back to you as staff and re-request all of that in this year's budget process, which we're doing, the IT department is doing that. And so we're kind of a, you know, behind an eight ball, so to speak, in terms of what we're requesting. Would it make me sleep better at night once all that's hopefully funded and implemented? Sure. I mean, again, I don't want to paint the wrong picture here, it's not that we are not secure today.
Sure.
I think we can be better prepared with the things that we are going, have requested and will be requesting again.
That's what I've heard you say. Thank you, Chad.
Just as a comment, we're going through the priority-based budgeting right now. We've had one meeting, we've got another meeting this Thursday morning, and part of that priority-based budgeting is looking at each of the areas of the city and seeking to decide how much funds to be. So there's an opportunity there for aldermen or anyone that wants to come and try to make sure that we are putting proper priorities to be there, so we have a meeting Thursday morning at 10:00, I think?
Nine to 12:00.
Nine to 12:00, all right. We already spent four hours, but we now get to spend more, all right. All right.
Mr. Mayor, just one question.
Yeah.
Mr. Aubrey, I appreciate you reading this stuff and caring enough to stand up and say those things. I think it's greatly appreciated by me and the rest of this board that you're interested enough and you care, and I just wanted to say that.
Now we're ready to vote?
Yeah, one more question, Mayor.
Okay.
Back to the CARES Act money?
Yes.
Is that like a kick-in, or is that covering all of it?
Well, we're going to submit the entire $3,600 for that because it's not included in our budget, it was not included in our original budget. It did come as a result of the COVID and the need to teleworking and those kind of things, so we had to come in, process all of that stuff, and so this will be greatly helpful in the event that we have another problem that occurs this year that hopefully we don't, but in the event that we do, we'll be better equipped for this.
So it's an application process?
It is an application process, so it will be submitting it to the county, and the county just released their application, I got it this morning, so.
How do you feel about that?
About the application? I feel like that we're prepared. We plan on submitting it tomorrow evening. It's basically right now, we answer questions and we present an estimate, so throughout this whole thing, the directors were keeping lists of the things that they needed that would make it easier to do teleworking and even easier on the businesses coming in, so you'll see that in the next item, but I feel like that we're going to submit everything that is, falls under the requirements, and hopefully that we'll get that funded.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the primary effect of that is, which was spent during, or needed to be spent during the COVID, this COVID?
March through, March through December 30th, 1st of this year is when it will be effective.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ready to vote? The vote on the first reading of bill number 5830 is yes, five. Five present, passed. Ready to move on to item 10. Madam Clerk, would you please provide the introduction for this item?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5831, an ordinance amending the contract with Central Square Technologies pertaining to the purchase of Central Square payment processing technology and authorizing mayor to execute the contract.
Staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is a credit card processing with Central Square. Actually, we have Click2Gov, which allows you to do your utilities and pay your utility bills online currently, and Click2Gov is directly interfaced with Central Square, it's their product. Click2Gov will also provide the business licenses and tourism tax model that I will talk about in just a few minutes, but the current credit card processing technology, they will no longer be supporting at the end of this year, so we have to change.
So we have to change that third-party credit card processor. And it behooves us to do that now for a couple of different reasons, because if you elect to go with the online business license and tourism tax model, we will need that as well. Also, we are currently—we currently, just for these models, we pay $52,000 in credit card fees. And what this processing will do is they will take the expense off of us, and they will charge a fee for anybody that's wanting to use a credit card. However, we won't get any of the revenue, and we won't handle any of the expense. It will all be with the credit card processing. So it will be a fixed fee. Credit card transaction will be a $2.99 fee. And if you want to do an e-check, it'll be $1.99 for anything that you want to use that credit card for. We do have other options of payments in the event that they don't want to. Pay with a credit card, we have the ability to do the ABT, which basically says we'll just—we'll do a draft out of your account every month for the amount of the payment. You can do it by check. You can do it by cash. You can do mail-in, Dropbox. There's all kinds of different options. But this is a way that it will—we have to have the third-party processor anyway, because it goes away at the end of December. And this will be helpful to the city to help relieve us of $52,000 in credit card fees at the end of it all. So we do recommend approval of this, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
You've heard the first reading of Bill Number 5831. Report from Jamie Roush. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So have—second?
A second. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this item?
Yes, I just want to reiterate something. Jamie, thank you for that and saving the city $52,000. And I just wanted to reiterate that this will be $52,000 we don't have to spend, that the $2.99 fee for—excuse me just a second. It's important to wear these sometimes—for either the e-check or the credit card is borne by the people paying that cost, and that's a total. So if they paid $100,000—
It's a fixed fee, certainly.
Fixed fee. Okay. Thank you so much.
And Jamie?
Yes, sir.
One question, just to clarify. You said that this would allow tourism tax be paid also?
Yes, sir. The next—the next bill coming before you is that—is asking for that. This one is just to implement the third-party credit card. The next one you'll see will be that.
Very nice. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Ready to vote? Five aldermen present? Yes, five, passed. Ready to move on to Item 11. Madam Clerk, could you please provide the introduction to this item?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5832, in ordinance amending the contract with Central Square Technologies pertaining to the purchase of an online module for business licenses and tourism tax payments and authorizing mayor to execute the contract.
Again, with a staff report from Jamie Roush.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. And now this is the business license and the tourism tax online model that we were talking about. It's an add-on, and it's similar to the employee self-serve model. And they did quote us a very reasonable price of $3,644 for this module. And we will be submitting this to the county for reimbursement as well. We're pretty excited about this, because during the shutdown, several of us were—we were doing it at home. Some of us had to come into the office. And what this will allow us to do is it will allow our businesses to be able to go online and do the online portal for their business license, for their renewals and those kind of things. And it will also allow them to pay their tourism tax online as well. And we've had many of requests for that over the years. But through the COVID, we just really recognized the need for it. We reached out to our software company and said, hey, as a result of the times we're in, is there anything that you can offer us? And they had this, and we did a demo of this, and it is pretty good. I'm pretty excited about it. So we do recommend approval of this. I'll happy—answer any questions. Thank you.
You've heard the final first reading of Bill Number 5832. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been made. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this item?
Yes, sir. Jamie, are two out of these three covered in the CARES Act?
I'm submitting all three of them.
Okay. I want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
The fees to the City of Branson for people to pay this, are they—how to ask this question? The people who are paying, do they have to pay a fee like they did on the previous item, $2.99?
If they're paying with a credit card, the previous item, it'll be the fixed fee.
Same thing.
If they're paying with a credit card.
Thank you.
There's always those other four options that we have available.
Okay.
Did you have a—Larry?
Jamie, I just want to take my hat off to you. Thank you. This has been—
You're very welcome. Certainly.
One last question. I'm sorry. How much would this one save us if the other one did X number of dollars?
This one—I haven't put a dollar figure in mine, but it's going to save us a lot of time, and it's going to help improve our efficiencies quite a bit, and it's helped us to move into the electronic era. So I'd hate to give you a dollar figure. I haven't put it into place quite a bit, but—
More than $10 less than $100,000?
Certainly.
Okay. I got you. You could just say priceless.
To me, yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Five aldermen present? Yes, five, passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Item 12. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction for this item.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5833, in ordinance accepting the proposal of JCI Industries Incorporated for the rebuild or replacement of lift station pumps and authorizing mayor to execute the contract.
And we'll hear a staff report from Mike Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. The Utilities Department currently operates 40 sewer lift stations within the city's sewer collection system, consisting of 87 pumps, ranging in size from 20 to 300 horsepower, with capabilities of pumping 50 to 3,000 gallons per minute. The stations are used to convey wastewater through the collection system to treatment facilities. Each station requires daily physical monitoring to assure proper operation and a thorough preventive maintenance program to maintain equipment reliability. Through our priority-based budgeting process, the department manages an annual lift station pump rebuild program, which we send off an average of 10 to 12 pumps per year to have them evaluated, and a determination is made to either rebuild or replace the unit, depending on the condition. On an average quality—a quality lift station pump can average about an 18 to a 20-year lifespan if they are rebuilt on six to seven-year intervals. During the past 10 years, the department's developed a strict specification for reliable pump design. All equipment, all replacement pumps, regardless of brand, must meet these critical requirements. Under these specifications, our current maintenance program, the risk of failures and sanitary sewer spills have been significantly reduced. One bid was received in February from JCI Industries for replacement pumps, meeting all specifications for units listed in the evaluation for 2020. The request for bid indicated the department would first have the existing pumps listed in the bid scope inspected and evaluated for possible rebuild in lieu of replacement. Pumps found to be suitable for rebuild in a cost-effective basis will be refurbished, and those not will be replaced as necessary. The—the total for all pumps, if they were to be replaced, would be $216,643. A general rule of thumb is a rebuild should not exceed 50%. We expect that the majority of these pumps will be able to be rebuilt. If necessary, to replace, the flight units meet all specifications. We have funds available in our Internal Service Fund. And obviously, with these year's conditions, we will be watching our revenues to make sure that we are able to fund the rebuilds. And we will only take this in a month-by-month basis and rebuild what is—only what is necessary, or replace only what is necessary. We do have one pump in this group that has failed, and we are having issues with a second pump. So we thought it best to bring this contract forward and at least address those pumps. Total contract would be a not-to-exceed amount of $132,000. Staff recommends approval of the bill.
Staff recommends?
Yes.
You've heard the recommendation from Mike Ray. Do I have a motion for—the after the first reading of Bill 5833 to approve?
So move.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this matter? Not nearly as glamorous as IT, but very, very important, right?
We try.
Any aldermen wish to speak to this matter?
Mayor?
Yes.
So do we budget for 12 rebuilds?
We did in our original budget. The COVID budget, we had to hold up on these projects. And visiting with our Finance Department, we do have the funds available in an interim service fund, which is set aside for situations just like this, if we find ourselves in a—
And do either of these come into play with the Country Bluff Fall Creek possible taking out of service?
No, sir. They do not.
Thank you.
Any other questions from aldermen?
No. Jeff asked my question. Good question.
Thank you. Yes, five. Five present, approved. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Item Number 13. Madam Clerk, please provide the introduction for this item.
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5834, in ordinance amending Section 2-136 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to dealings with employees by Board or Mayor.
We have a staff report from Chris LeBeck.
Good afternoon, or good evening, Mayor, members of the board. As alluded to in our training session—I believe it was last week—we were going to bring before the board a number of, we'll say, minor code revisions to clean up some of the language. This is the first of those. As was learned during our training last week, the City of Branson is a unique kind of fourth-class political subdivision in that we have a format where we have a mayor, a city administrator, and a board. So the city administrator is kind of the interface for the mayor and the board to the employees and to the functioning of the city. What Chad has brought up there on the big screen is the state statute that authorized this form of government. It's actually buried in the third-class political subdivision portion of our state law, and it talks about the governing body of any city of the third class and any fourth-class city may by ordinance provide for the employment by their governing body with the approval of the mayor of a city administrator, who shall be the chief administrative assistant to the mayor and who shall have the general superintending control of the administration and management of the government business. Officers and employees of the city, subject to the direction and supervision of the mayor. We put this form of government into play here by my research in 1988, roughly. That's when we shifted to a city administrator form. Kind of piggybacking on that, we passed an ordinance that's been through a municipal code that's been through a number of permutations, and that's Section 2-136. And that's the duties of our city administrator. One such prong of that is subsection F, which talks about dealings with employees by the Board or the mayor. Now, there's been some confusion over the past couple of years as to what that means. Specifically, there's some—I'll be honest, some poorly-written language in the back end of subsection F that says, except for the purpose of inquiry. Number one, that's a tautology, which is bad grammar. During board meetings, except for the purpose of inquiry, the board and its members shall deal with the employees solely through the city administrator, and neither the board nor any of the members nor the mayor shall give orders to any city employee except the city administrator, either publicly or privately. The problem with the way that is worded is the phrase, except for the purpose of inquiry. That's kind of an old term of art that would imply during a board meeting or a committee meeting. Unfortunately, it's been used in a context of board members and the mayor interfacing directly with employees. So the goal of Bill Number 5834 is to clean that language up. So we're dropping the tautology of for the purpose of, in clarifying, consistent with the statute you see before you, 77.042, that this is—type of inquiry of employees shall occur during board or committee meetings. So again, this is one of a few cleanups you're going to see to help kind of tighten up some of our codes, make them more consistent with state law. Legal Department recommends this ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions as the sole member of the Legal Department.
All right. You've heard the staff report from Chris LeBeck. We've heard the first reading of Bill 5834. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Motion's been made. Second?
Second.
Second? Mr. Simmons, all right. We have a motion and a second. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak regarding this matter? Any aldermen wishing to speak regarding this matter?
I've got a question, just—
Okay. Please do.
Being one of the newbies to the board, I just want to clarify. I know there was past instances with previous administration, city administrator—I just want to make sure, like, if I, as a board of aldermen, had a question with—just since Jamie is up here, like, with finance, could we call for—could I call for Jamie and Stan together? How would that work?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Again, think about it in this context. Stan is your primary interface. That's why we have this form of government. Stan can bring Jamie into the context, Stan can bring me into the context, whoever is appropriate, to help answer that question. The suggestion here is not that you can't talk to Jamie, you can't talk to me, you can't talk to Mr. Francis. The suggestion is that these type of questions should be funneled in line with our form of government, which is through the city administrator, unless you're in a board meeting like today, when you can have the give and take with that director.
And if I could add just to that, since I am Stan, the easiest way—and I think—I will use the other aldermen that have been here a while—if you have a question for any staff member, like Jamie, for instance, regarding something financial, I have no qualms whatsoever if you send her an email, if you just CC me on it. And the reason for that is twofold. First, it keeps me in the loop. It lets me know what your concern is, which is my responsibility. And secondly, I make sure that you guys get follow-up. I'm—I'm a—some of you know that I'm a little bit aggressive about making sure that follow-up occurs with this city. It's something that's been, in my opinion, we've kind of lacked in the past. So I'm a stickler to stay on people to get the information that you all need.
Here, here.
Yes, Mr. Simmons?
Now, under this, I can still go to Gina, because that's who I get my answers from. No matter what I ask, I go to Stan's administrative assistant, assuming that she will inform Stan. And if it's something for Jamie, then she either gets the answer for me or has Jamie contact me, same way with the—with IT or anybody. Is that still allowed under this?
Absolutely. In all fairness, Gina is the de facto city administrator for the City of Branson.
Yes.
Mayor?
And she does follow up and sees that you get an answer without disturbing, you know, the department.
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Jeff?
So how does John play into this? Is he in the link of command?
He is. John is Stan's number two, and all the directors sit underneath John, if I'm correct, on the organizational chart.
Thanks.
So we all have to keep John down.
Yeah, you got to do something.
Chris, could you address the issue of relationships? If you serve on a committee like I served on planning and zoning for two years, and it's an issue to be brought up, then you may contact Joel and have that, because you are a commissioner and you're having those discussions. You just should loop Stan in on it.
That's the end goal here. Again, we want to make sure we're transparent, and there's not misinformation and improper information being funneled. So what happens is we want to make sure that our messaging and the information we're providing is consistent into the entire board as a whole. So that's why we have Stan or a city administrator sitting in the middle of all of this, so that they can make sure that the proper information, the correct information, is being funneled back up to the— back up to the board or back up to the mayor, since under 77.042, the city administrator is subject to the direction and supervision of the mayor.
And just to comment about this form, it's by statute, it's a form there. Springfield, for instance, is an entirely different type form of government. It's a charter government. And the mayor there has different authorities and different abilities to do things. So there's a lot of confusion. I get a lot of questions about, why don't you do that? Or whatever. But we're a Class IV city under, is there a statute?
Cleanest example of that, for those of you that have watched part of the city council meeting last night in Springfield that went well after midnight, and when you saw the vote on face coverings, Mayor McClure voted. That's something that would not normally happen in a fourth-class political subdivision unless there's a tie.
Any other question? Yes, Alderman Milton.
Well, I sure see this a different way. I don't see this as a minor code revision. I see this as a substantial change. And what's not sitting right with me is, first couple of times I read this, it felt like it was taking the voice away from the community. And the reason I say that is the community has the power on, for elected officials. So the aldermen are the ones that are responsible to the community. And I don't think we're just simply, by simply taking out the words "the purpose of inquiry," it's never set right with me that it's healthier to confined communication versus allowing communication. So I liken it to a, well, I guess there are several things. But one is, let's say somebody worked at a department store, a restaurant, and they were a staff manager or a department manager. If they have any issues with, if there's concerns that the general manager isn't handling, the choice is, you can't have, well, what we do have is every one of our department heads answers to Stan, period. And Stan has the authority to hire and fire. So when I first came on the board, I was uncomfortable knowing that every one of our department heads, they go to Jamie and ask about amendments in their budget or moving some money or doing something, and Jamie is the ultimate authority, and she says yes or no. And I often ask myself, I wonder how many times a department head has gone to Jamie and was given an answer of no, where the board, if the board was asked that same question, I wonder if the board would see it differently. And it would be the same with Stan. Instead of, because what this is clearly saying is, I cannot contact the finance department. Now, I understand you can't have too many chefs in the kitchen. There needs to be one CEO. That CEO actually gives the direction, because you can't have six monkeys up here telling the different departments what we want them to do, because that's very inefficient. But as far as communicating, I just see that as stifling, I see it as stifling the voters' rights. The voters have no input, no control over staff members within the city. But they do have control, and they can fire the elected officials on an annual basis if they don't like what they're doing. So I'm not sure what this minor change is suggesting. I just heard Stan say, and I heard him say it 12 months ago, when I want to talk to Jamie or any of the department heads, I do copy Stan, and I do that out of, well, he told me to. But I also do it out of professional courtesy to keep him in the loop. But this says I cannot do that anymore. This is the only time I can communicate with any director is during a board or committee meeting. And I don't know what we're trying to accomplish by restraining and tying the hands of the elected officials and not allowing them to at least have an inquiry, not giving direction, but an inquiry to department heads as long as Stan's kept in the loop.
Okay. I'll make one comment. I think Stan wants to chime in. We had the opportunity, myself, Alderman Saye and Alderman Whitis, to attend another training, and that was on Friday. And that talked about the structure of government that we have here in the city of Branson. And one comment that an individual, I believe it was Nathan Nichols, who wrote the book on sunshine law, made is that the Board of Aldermen is the legislative body of the city. Okay? That's your purpose, is you are here to legislate rules, legislate laws. We have a city administrator who, again, by state law, is obligated to have general superintending control of the administration and management of the government business, officers and employees of the city. So again, we have a separation of powers here, a legislative body and an administrative body. All right? Now, sitting in between that, what's your level of control as an elected officer? Well, your level of control isn't as an individual board member, it's as a board as a whole. If you look up into section 2-136, your ultimate power is removal of Mr. Dobbins as city administrator. And that can happen one of two ways. It can happen by the mayor with a majority of the board or by a majority of the elected members of the board under subsection A. So that's your check and balance between the legislative side of the House and the administrative side of the House. So, and I'm going to yield it to Stan because...
Just real quick. And I understand that that's the ultimate authority of the board is to fire Stan. But that's a pretty extreme measure, right? Like, to me, that didn't make sense, that, okay, well, if you don't like these things, just fire him. I think there's a better process to put in place. Because who wants to fire Stan?
I do.
His wife?
Basically, what I will, what I'm trying to say here is, a lot of this is coming because we had some problems. Those problems resulted in directors coming to me after I was given this position and saying, Stan, I've got city aldermen trying to tell me what to do. That can't happen. I will say that, and one of the things that I've been really thrilled with is that I've got John here now. John is kind of an internal check and balance for us as well. If, again, one particular location within the city, we had so much turmoil going on because some aldermen were pushing what I will call their own agenda. And the bottom line is this. No alderman has any authority in the city. It is the board that has authority only. So if the board wants to inquire to a director about something, they are free to do so at any time. I personally am a little more lenient and relaxed. All I've asked is, no, it's not that I want every communication, every question you got. I want you to get an answer. I simply have asked that I be copied on those concerns. And some of them, we can address. Some of them, we can't. The biggest thing with this ordinance change is that one of the things, when the matter was brought up, they said, well, according to this, I can go and do anything I want, and that's not factual. So it is, there are several cleanups, not just about this topic, but overall in our ordinances that have not been cleaned up in quite a while. And this is just one of them. It was one that we, quite frankly, were kind of called on by outside legal counsel when we started having concerns, and also by our auditor on the 76 project that said you had aldermen going out and giving orders to people that should not have been occurring. And so that's what this is all about. It's to make sure that we have a proper chain of command and control. It's just that simple. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, I am the guy that the buck stops with. And I'm not asking you to make me the grand pooh bar or anything like that. I've already been called that enough when I was doing the police job and this job. But simply speaking, there does need to be checks and balances for the other, for the directors in the city. And I'm the guy. John is my check and balance. So that's really what it all comes down to. I'll let Chris talk about the legal part. I'm just telling you my perspective of it all.
Just, let me just, if I can reply. Stan, I just, I completely agree with everything you just said. And I think that's the way I've understood it. I just, I would strongly prefer to keep the process that we've had that we cannot tell a director what to do. We cannot give instruction. That's just an unhealthy process. But boy, I'd sure hate to not, I'd sure hate to remove the process of making an inquiry, carbon copying you, and saying, okay, you cannot do that any longer unless you're in this board meeting. You look puzzled.
Yeah, because that's what we're solidifying here today. Because here's the situation, and here's the scenario. I'm trying to think of a hypothetical to explain this better. Let's say I, as a member of the board, acting on my own, decide to ask Mr. Francis, I just send him an email because his email's publicly on the website, to please provide me all the records for the 76 project. Okay? I don't include Stan. That's an inquiry to a director, level position below Stan in the city. Mr. Francis proceeds to start running a bunch of records, scrambling, taking his resources and his time away from what he's working on to comply with that request from the alderman. Okay? The reason we're doing this is so that our city administrator, under our form of government, is included in that conversation so that if the city administrator, as the person responsible with general superintending control of the administration and management of government business, decides that it's not appropriate for Mr. Francis to go chase that rabbit, then he has the ability to shut it down. Because again, that's a single board member. That's not the board as a whole. That's the goal here. So you've hit the nail right on the head, Alderman Milton. That's what we're trying to accomplish today is to make sure that the city administrator is involved in all those channels of communications because that is his obligation. That is his duty under 77.042 and 2-136.
Okay, Chris, I think in the example you used, I interpret that as a giving a direction to Keith, not an inquiry. If I wanted to ask information, oh, let's say, about the public safety tax fund. You there, Stan? I would, I would forward that to John and Jamie, and I would copy Stan.
Great.
Well, this says, if I wanted that same information, I would have to ask for it in a, this board meeting or in a committee meeting. No? Really?
Correct.
So it used to say, except for the purpose of inquiry, the board and its members shall deal with the employees solely through the city administrator, and neither the board nor the members nor the mayor shall give orders to any city employee. The change is, except for inquiry, during board or committee meetings, the board and its members shall deal with employees.
Solely through the city administrator. That's still there.
During board and committee meetings.
Shall deal with the employees solely through the city administrator. If you read the change in context with the entirety of paragraph F of 2-136, it accomplishes the goals that you are trying to lay out right now, Alderman. In the sense that if you need information from Jamie...
What would the difference be if it didn't say during board or committee meetings?
Then you would have the ability to email anybody if you had a question. Doesn't matter what...
That's my point.
It doesn't matter what the level of effort of that question is. You could email an individual employee and to give me that information without involving the city administrator. That's the change.
Okay. Well, I don't, I clearly don't see it that way. I don't think that's what this says. I think if this gets approved, then I no longer have the right to send a inquiry and carbon copy Stan.
As a legal counsel for the city and to the Board of Aldermen, I'm telling you openly in a meeting, you still have that ability with this change. You're more than happy to seek outside counsel if you disagree with my opinion. If the board so chooses, the board can order me to get outside opinion on this change as well. More than happy to do that if the board so desires.
I sure hope we can just table this, vote it down, discuss it, and bring it back because it's bold and underlying during board or committee meetings. Bob?
The chair recognizes Mr. Simmons.
I 100% agree with Alderman Milton that that's what this says. I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I can read, and that's what it says. However, that's a matter of semantics. It means, do I email Jamie and carbon copy Stan? Or do I email Stan and carbon copy Jamie and see if Stan gets the job done? That's his job to see that that question's answered. So it's just a matter of who you put the heading to. I mean, we still have the right to ask the question. And, but we do need to go through Stan. Otherwise, the biggest complaint of any employee in an organization is that they have too many bosses.
Sure.
And that's Stan's job below us. That's Stan's job to see that his department heads and all, everybody understands who they answer to and that they only have one boss.
Agreed.
And so when it comes up the line, the same thing. Is Stan is responsible for all of the others. And so our questions should, to me, and that's why I go to Gina, thinking that is going to Stan. And if you don't want to do that, well, that's fine with me. But basically, then I expect them to get back to me with that answer. If they have to go to Jamie, or if they have to go to Keith or whoever, whoever that falls in their department, then they should get me an answer on that. And so I really don't think, I don't think this is limiting us from getting an answer. It's just saying who we have to go through to get the answer.
But Bob, didn't you say that when you read this, you read it the same way, that you can make an inquiry during board or committee meeting?
I agree that that's what it says. I'm sorry, but I agree with him. That's what it says here. But I'm saying that's not a big deal because it just means that instead of making my inquiry to Jamie, I make it to Stan, and I expect Stan to get the answer from Jamie.
And Stan's telling you in this meeting, as the person responsible for general superintending control, yada, yada, that going, writing that email to Jamie with him on it is sufficient to comply with the rule. So it is, it's exactly a game of semantics.
I disagree with him there, but that's okay if he likes it.
But we're also putting this in a bill so if and when Stan doesn't, isn't our city administrator, whoever the next city administrator is, we're putting this in for forever, for everybody.
Correct.
I don't like...
But that also is when, if you're not getting the answer because I became a roadblock, that you as a board can sit up here and say, I have this question. Why did you not get it answered as a board? Because you guys as a board are the only one with that power.
I think we have that power without putting in this language during board or committee meetings.
Yeah. I mean, John just whispered something in my ear that I think deserves repeating. Sitting in this room today, there are only three people that work for the Board of Aldermen, myself, Mr. Dobbins, and Ms. Westfall. That's it. Everybody else is under that hierarchy of Administrator Dobbins. Everybody else is under that hierarchy of Administrator Dobbins. So, again, this mirrors that organizational form.
Just a comment. I think it's difficult for Aldermen to grasp that they're elected in their ward. There are two Aldermen from each ward to represent the people from their ward, and it's very difficult sometimes to not want, get something done. They want to have something happen. They want to get something taken care of. But, we're a board of six people, and I'm not a board of six people, you guys are. But, you're here to make decisions together. One person can't represent this board or request something that the whole board doesn't necessarily agree with. So, I think we have to be careful to remember what our real authority is, is to represent the people of our particular ward. And that's where we're legislating. We've had two training sessions, one a week ago, and then the two down below went to one in Jeff City, along with you, I believe, Chris.
I was the chauffeur.
Yeah, which helped understand the form of government, that helped to see how it works and how it's supposed to work. Education is important, and so, I'm hopeful that what we're trying to do is, we're trying to clean up some stuff that's been vague, but we now are recognizing that we're a city manager form of government, and that's what we are. Are you ready to vote? Yes, four; no, one. Larry Milton, no; Jamie Whitish, yes; Jeff C., yes; Bill Skane, yes; Bob Simmons, yes. It passes the first reading. Ready to move on to item number 14? Madam Clerk, would you please provide?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of bill number 5835, an ordinance amending section 2-77 of the Branson Municipal Code pertaining to abstentions.
Begin with a staff report from Chris LeBeck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. This is another cleanup item. As we know, we have some history in this city in the past year-plus with regards to abstentions. The purpose of this ordinance is, quite frankly, clean that up and how they are to be handled within this political subdivision. As you are aware, from not only my statements during previous board meetings, but also outside counsel statements during previous board meetings, the common law rule in Missouri is that a councilman has a duty and an obligation to vote. And there's a corollary to that rule, and that corollary is that any passed vote or abstention under the common law, the common law being precedent that's been built out over the years in the state of Missouri, is it's to be counted with the majority, okay? There's an exception to that general common law rule here in the state of Missouri, and Missouri Court of Appeals addressed that, and that's with regards to situations where statutory law governs the voting requirements. Here in a fourth-class municipality with a mayor, city administrator, Board of Aldermen form of government, the statute and code state, okay, it's how a bill becomes an ordinance and becomes a rule, that no ordinance shall be passed except by bill, and no bill shall become an ordinance unless on its final passage, a majority of the members elected to the board shall vote for it, and the ayes and nays be entered on the journal. So, we have a statutory construction that controls how a bill becomes an ordinance, and as a result of that, that Court of Appeals says that abrogates or that replaces the common law rule. So, we cannot count abstentions with the majority. So, what's the solution when somebody strategically tries to use an abstention to frustrate the vote on an item, to basically take the mayor out of the picture? Well, Missouri Municipal League, there's a couple of different methods. First method is kind of the method where the mayor, under the, you probably heard this every single board meeting since this first occurred, has the ability, under Roberts Rules of Order, to control the order and decorum of the meeting. The mayor can make a statement advising everybody that any abstentions can be recast as no votes. We can't recast them in the affirmative. We've been told by Missouri Court of Appeals we can, but there's nothing that forbids the mayor from doing that. The best practice, however, is to codify that, codify that in the purpose of an ordinance, so that if this situation comes up again, because, again, we're in a situation where we only have six board members, okay? We learned during our training session that the mayor has veto powers. Those veto powers, when we only have six board members, are largely ceremonial. So, again, in respect to the mayoral position, the mayor's ability to break a tie, what do we do with a strategic abstention? Best practice is to codify a rule that says that if somebody abstains, that's counted in the negative, okay? That's counted as a no vote. That's what we're accomplishing here today. And I want to raise a couple of things. The first one is, what you see up here, this is chapter 79.150. Again, I always like to start with state law and what's our authority, okay? Can the board do this? Absolutely, the board can do this. So, if you read this piece of state law in its entirety, "The Board of Aldermen shall cause to be kept a journal of its proceedings, and the ayes and nays shall be entered on any question at the request of any two members." So, any two of you can ask that those be entered into the journal. The key point of this statute is where it says, "The Board of Aldermen may prescribe and enforce such rules as it may find necessary for the expeditious transaction of its business." Again, strategic abstentions stand in the way of expeditious transaction of business. You notice this was passed and first codified in 1939, okay? This has been the law of the land for quite some time. Second thing I want to point to is section 2-64. This is the reference to controlling order and decorum of the board, okay?
Chris, just a second.
Yes, sir.
Reference 2-64, is that of our code?
That's of our code.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, this mirrors state law. You'll see this throughout our city code. We have tried to mirror the authority that's been granted to us by the state legislature, okay? That's what this mirrors. That's what gives us the ability, as the presiding officer of the board, to control order and decorum, to take that role on. So, what this changes to our city code is it's adding an additional prong, that when a member of the board abstains, it's not counted with the majority as an "aye," it's counted as a "no," and it's logged on the roll as a "no" by our city clerk. So, staff, given what staff has seen over the past year and a half with regards to votes and strategic abstentions on the 76 Project, we recommend approval on this item.
You've heard the reading of bill 58, excuse me, 5835? Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Yes.
Respectfully, I'd like to be blunt in this comment. We talk up here about any two members, and yet, we hear a lot about how one Alderman doesn't equate to the board. However, you know, that's somewhat of an opinion, in my estimation. I mean, one Alderman does have prerogative. A one Alderman has prerogative to bring up something, one Alderman has prerogative to advocate for something. You know, it's, I think it would be easier to define what I'm trying to say if people didn't run as independents, like we like to do here in Branson, and they, it was a party system. So, I'll give you an example. Let's say we had three Aldermen that were Democrats, and we had three Aldermen that were Republicans. It was similar to kind of what we had in the previous board, and we had kind of a three-to-three split, at least on some issues. In that case, the mayor kind of caucused with one of the sides, as well as our city administrator and city attorney. So, I would be careful with this, what we're trying to kind of allude to up here, which sounds a lot like trying to kind of discourage dissent on the Board of Aldermen by saying it has to be the whole board, because in that case, you're not always going to get the whole board to agree on everything. So, I would just be careful with that language, and I would also like to say, basically, what we would be doing if we passed this is eliminating the filibuster, something they talk about in Congress, is that... So, I just want to say, don't think this isn't just as much a parliamentary procedure as the ones that were used before. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any board comments?
Yeah, I'd like to be able to address that. Larry, go ahead first, bud.
Marshall, I agree with you 100%.
I agree.
It's okay.
He's not going to stand up and lie about me.
I didn't...
And I'm sick and tired of his lies.
I'm unaware...
I do not stand with any of you six. I stand for the city of Branson, and for him to say that I took your, anyone's side in any issue is a bold-faced lie.
Marshall, do you say that or the mayor?
I thought you said the mayor.
No, he said I did, the city manager and the city attorney.
Correct.
Yeah, I recognize decorum too, Mr. Mayor.
You're out of line. City administrator.
Of course I am.
Just kidding. Okay, I see this, again, differently. There's obviously conflicting laws, conflicting rules, conflicting opinions on how to handle abstentions.
There's not.
Okay, now, I'm going to go fight with an attorney. Follow me this. We're all very well aware, this is a letter signed by John Ashcroft, the Attorney General. So, I'm going to put on my lawyer hat for a minute. The Attorney General writes to the representative of District 119, the Honorable James Strong, and I won't take the time to read this whole thing, but there's a few paragraphs I'd like to read. "This opinion is in the response to your question asking, 'When a member of a local government governing body abstains from a vote, should the member be considered as having voted with the majority?'" Blah, 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 laws, rules, and opinions. "Although we respectfully question the reasoning of the court in reaching such conclusion, we believe that such opinion is applicable to the votes required under section 79.130, and that we are required to follow the opinion of the court. Because we believe the holding of the court is applicable under the provisions of section 79.130 relative to fourth-class cities, if such an Alderman abstains from voting, his abstention should not be counted as a vote in any event.'" Conclusion: It is the opinion of this office, the state Attorney General's office, it is the opinion of this office that, under the holdings of Stewart versus Ken, blah, 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 an Alderman of a fourth-class city who abstains from voting under section 79.130 does not have his abstention counted as a vote. You mentioned Roberts Rules of Order. "Sometimes a member of local governing bodies, such as the city council, Board of County Commissioners, Plenary Commissioner, or a special district, does not, for whatever reason, want to cast a vote on a matter that is being considered of that body, and so, that member abstains. Assuming that the governing body allows the member to abstain, how is that abstention treated?" So, Chris, I'm going to raise the question, does our governing body allow the member to abstain?
In what context? How?
That's not a yes or no answer? Do we allow Aldermen to abstain in a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. "Many jurisdictions have, by reference, adopted Roberts Rules of Order to provide guidance in matters of voting and parliamentary procedure." Chris, does City Branson, do we reference the Roberts Rules of Order to provide guidance in matters of voting of parliamentary procedure?
Yeah.
Thank you. So, the basic principles in Roberts Rules concerning abstention are as follows: Abstentions are counted and noted, but not as a yes or no vote. An abstention does not affect the voting result. A member has the right to abstain and cannot be compelled to vote. One last point to remember is that an abstention does not count as a vote under the general rule when outlined in Roberts Rules, but the person abstaining does count towards establishing a quorum at the meeting to allow the transaction of business. Another point in Roberts Rules of Order, when should a member abstain? Unless there is good reason not to vote, all directors should vote on all motions. Although it is a duty of every member who has an opinion on a question to express it by his vote, he can abstain, since he cannot be compelled to vote. So, the bottom line, I just read what Roberts Rules of Order said, Chris says we follow Roberts Rules of Order. State of Missouri has not taken a position on this issue, and I'm not sure why Chris says they have. One question is, just because we have the ability to make up our own laws, should we, just because we can? This bill will affect our city well after we have a new mayor and a new board. Do we really want to impose this bill on future mayors and boards? Another question, has any other city in the state of Missouri passed a bill such as this? Do you know the answer to that, Chris?
Not off the top of my head. I'd have to do some research.
Okay, it's, I don't have the facts, but I've been told, no. If we're the only city in the state of Missouri that has taken this action, I think it's a fair question to ask why. I was told I couldn't, at the last meeting when we were talking about the HUD funding project, I read information that I was leaning towards a no vote. Alderman Simmons mentioned that I was missing some history, and I accepted that. Alderman Simmons has been here since, well, we won't go there.
Treason, Ross.
So, I said I'm going to abstain. I wanted to abstain because I did not have enough information to make an educated vote. Mayor says, "Larry, you abstain, and we're converting it to a no vote." I think there's times when abstentions should be accepted as, I'm not asked to sit up here and flip a coin, "You don't have enough information on this, tough shit, you have to vote." Flip a coin. Up, the answer's no. I don't think we want to operate that way. I think if there's a reason why an Alderman wants to abstain, I think he should be able to abstain, and I think an abstention should be an abstention. So, I'm shocked, I clearly don't understand why you would say there's no conflicting information in the state. Your position has been, and I don't know that it's fully agreed upon, but your position has been, the mayor has the authority to do this under Missouri common law, period. Correct?
No.
Oh. He has the authority to do this, to have changed an abstention to a no?
Not under common law. That's what I just went through.
What rights does the mayor have to change an abstention?
Alderman Milton, if you'd like to take a recess, I'm more than happy to print off, again, a copy of the outside counsel opinion that provides a secondary look at this.
That outside counsel, Chris, excuse me, but some of us felt that, I mean, that wasn't really a second opinion. When you have a city attorney who independently contacts another attorney and says, "Look, I'm reading abstentions this way, I need a second opinion, here's when I need you to come in," he comes in and says, blah, 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 blah. In my opinion, that wasn't an independent, second legal opinion.
I wasn't aware you were on that phone call, Alderman Milton. Bottom line is, I've made my position. I've advised the board what a course of action should be on this. We've vetted it through outside counsel. The Missouri Municipal League, which is kind of the, we'll say, the administrative body for most political subdivisions in the state, agrees that this is best practice when this does come up in municipalities, and that's why it's before the board today for consideration.
Any other comments?
Does that mean my time's up?
It can be. You want to make, have it be up, or you want to talk more?
Well, I guess what I'm hearing you say is what I have to say isn't going to make a difference anyway. Right?
Are you finished, Mr. Milton?
No, I'm not. Well, I tell you, I think the direction that I'm seeing the city go is, we want to discourage questioning, we want to absolutely take away any Alderman's right to abstain, no matter what the reason is, because there cannot be a possible valid... Why don't we take abstentions off the voting machine? Why don't we put a bill in that says Aldermen are no longer allowed to abstain? Why don't we just do that and cut through all this?
Because we can't.
I wonder why there's a reason why we can't, because they should allow abstentions. We're saying, in this bill, we're not allowing abstentions. If you abstain, you're voting no.
No, you're still abstaining, it's just being recast under the procedure of the city as a no vote.
Okay, that's not split hairs. If an Alderman abstains, the mayor reads at the beginning of every meeting, "If you abstain for any reason, I'm changing your vote to a no." And that just doesn't seem like a full transparency, healthy government that we claim to be.
Alderman Skane, oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Skane, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir, I was just going to ask Chris a question.
Yes, sir.
Abstentions are legal and available when the... Abstentions are legal and available when the individual has a bona fide conflict of interest, which is registered with the city clerk as well. Situation that we had with Bob, with his company. When he has these discussions, he can't vote, he must abstain.
Is that recusing or abstaining?
It's a recusal. In Alderman Simmons' situation, he would remove himself completely from discussion and from voting. So he, there's, I think we learned in our training on Friday, I'm looking at the two aldermen, there's recusal light and recusal heavy, I think, is the terminology that that other attorney used.
Yeah, I mean, the training we had last Friday through the Missouri Municipal League, I mean, that was one of the things that was discussed. And mainly, the purpose of the abstention was conflict of interest, like, yes, we just said. But sometimes you can be sitting in a meeting and realize it's a conflict of interest at that time, and that's why you weren't able to bring it up beforehand in this situation. So that's one of the versions that the Missouri Municipal League said would be the abstention, is to notify the conflict of interest.
That goes to the base of my question, because that is really an abstention and a recusal. Am I right on that?
Correct, it's both.
He abstains from voting.
He's abstaining from the process by walking out of the room.
I just want to separate the difference out of what Larry was alluding to, that there really is a chance or a situation for an abstention.
Absolutely, and we went through that in the training that we did in this council chamber last week, or week before last.
And if you'd like, I'd be happy to read again what I read that you obviously didn't hear, that I have, I may, I may, and that means I can or cannot?
Just another question, Chris, anything that we're taking here, is it noncompliance with state law or illegal in your opinion?
Absolutely not.
All of us would need to have that question.
Absolutely not, we keep hanging our hat on an Attorney General opinion from the '60s, and we're hanging our hat on a paragraph that's taken out of context. And that was the theme when this was brought up by outside counsel. That was the theme of the article that the Missouri Municipal League put out there. If you read that in context with that Attorney General opinion. And one thing we need to realize, just as a matter of precedence, an Attorney General opinion is no different than an opinion by any other competent attorney. And those opinions are only given to state boards, not political subdivisions and state agencies.
So if the mayor already has the right to do it, why are we making this a bill?
Well, there's a number of reasons. Number one, and I'm gonna spitball some of these, it's efficiency. I don't know about you, but I don't like sitting there every single board meeting, listening to the mayor read the same couple paragraphs, doing something that we could codify on the books. That's the first reason. The second reason is so that for incoming board members in the future, there's no confusion how business is done in our unique form of a fourth-class political subdivision. During the trainings that we provide the board members, this will be one of the things that we highlight and go over, that, understand this, we don't do strategic abstentions in the city if this is passed. You can recuse yourself if you have a conflict of interest, you can go down various paths as we've been trained on. But for using an abstention for purpose of basically taking away the mayor's ability to break a tie as is authorized by state law, this corrects that hole.
Well, I thank you for the education process we went through over a week ago, and for our two aldermen going up to Jeff City to learn more about what their responsibilities and duties are as an alderman. And we're just trying to get as much education as we can about how to be able to operate this city. And it's disappointing when it's not taken advantage of to try to learn more. That's my statement. All right, abstention, you want to vote, let's vote. Vote is yes for, no one. Larry Milton, no, Jamie Whitish, yes, Jeff Say, yes, Bill Skane, yes, Bob Simmons, yes. It passes on first reading. All right.
I thought about abstaining.
Did you?
I was gonna abstain.
Then you got over it, huh? Okay. I changed papers around here, let's get to where I'm supposed to be.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one question?
Yeah.
To Chris?
Yes, sir.
As Marshall had made a reference to the term filibuster, is that a term that we use?
It's nowhere in Chapter 79, which deals with fourth-class municipalities.
Because it was a legitimate question, I was just raising it.
Oh, absolutely, it is, because again, in society today, we see things that occur on TV, we read things on Facebook, we see things that happen in the news, and then we think that those things that we see are applicable everywhere. As we learned during our training, Dillon's Rule controls a fourth-class municipality, our powers, our rules, are all those things that are vested in us by the state legislature. And they have yet to codify the ability to filibuster at the municipal level.
Thank you.
Item 15, Madam Clerk, would you please provide us with the introduction?
Your Honor, this is the first reading of Bill Number 5836, an ordinance approving the sale of real estate to Rodriguez Real Estate Investment LLC and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Staff report from Chris Lebec.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. Some of you may have deja vu on this item. If you recall, we brought this item before the board. We attempted to do a double read on it, Alderman Simmons talked us out of that bad idea, and for better, because we found out during the surveying process that the actual piece of property is smaller than what we were trying to sell them. So we went and had the property resurveyed, replatted, and as a result of that, the piece of property that is going, that we're proposing to be sold to Botanis, or the organization that owns Botanis, is significantly smaller. But what this boils down to is this allows economic development in our city. Number one, we're selling off a small chunk of the Ballparks property or the old airport property that sits as part of the parking lot and part of the back structure of this restaurant. By doing this, this gives that business the opportunity to expand, okay? Since they would own the land underneath it, they would have the opportunity to expand and feel comfortable doing so. So this is an opportunity to give that business a piece of their pie, if you will, so that they can make capital improvements to their restaurant. And as a result of that, this would also provide the city roughly $76,000 in, and I'm gonna get this wrong, and I'm gonna hear from Jamie in the back room in a second, but it's gonna go into our investment fund. Did I get that right? Yay, hallelujah. So staff recommends approval. Again, we've worked hard with the potential person sort to get this done. One other note, this ordinance also authorizes the mayor, not only once you approve this contract for sale, the ability to execute the warranty deed that's actually gonna convey the property and any accompanying paperwork. So again, closing is set out, is gonna be set out after this works its way through the board, but then the mayor's gonna have some homework to do as a result of, if the board decides to approve this. Staff recommends approval.
You've heard the first reading of Bill 5836. Do I have a motion approving this bill?
So move.
Motion's been made, second?
Second.
Second's been made. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this matter? Any aldermen wishing to speak to this matter? Mr. Simmons?
Chris, I'm sorry, I didn't ask this the first time, but this is not involved with the Ballparks lease, is it?
No, absolutely not, this is-
So this property was never in the Ballparks lease?
Yeah, I had that confusion too. That whole area over there is kind of a quote-unquote hot mess, to be quite frank with you. The issue that we captured here was through multiple amended leases and leases and conveyances over the years, nobody ever resurveyed the property and took into account the expansion of Pat Nash. But the one thing that we did confirm is this has no effect on that master ground lease that we're using with Ballparks of Branson LLC.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a question goes for standard. Jamie, if Jamie can yell at us through the other room on there. The $76,000 that goes to the investment fund, how long does it stay in that? And what does it take to get those monies out of the investment fund? For what purposes do they use? I'll just let you answer that question before I ask it.
Certainly, it needs to go into the investment fund to offset the revenue that we will no longer be getting. So what we'll do is we'll invest it, and we'll earn monies off of that, and we'll offset that revenue and then earn additional dollars upon that. In the event that we need to draw it down, it's there, we have it with our investment banking firm that we can draw. We have a liquid amount that we draw back within 24 hours if needed.
It's gone into a general investment fund, it doesn't have a separate account for it, and then you just book it, put it on the books, and pull it in and out as you wish, right? Not necessarily.
I wouldn't say as I wish, but yeah, this would have been general fund, so it will go in the general fund investment fund.
That's what I was-
It's not a special revenue, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? Please vote. Yes, five. Five present, approved. There you see the votes, all five yeses. All right, item number 16, says appointments, the appointment process in accordance with the Board and Committee Appointments Procedure. At this time, would any alderman like for an appointment to be pulled off the slate and voted on individually? I know you all were sent out packets last week with information on the vote tonight. Does anyone have anyone they want to pull off to discuss? If not, I'll read the recommendation for the Advisory Park Board. I do not vote on this item, I do not vote. The Advisory Park Board, Scott Weiss, Candace Selinger, Jennifer Holder, and Mica Farley are the recommendations. For the Planning Commission, Philip Lloyd and Chuck O'Day.
And Mayor, we'd just like to also reflect the replacement and the terms as written, so we can include those in our minutes, please. You don't have to read them, just so that the board knows those will be reflected, if that's okay.
They're on the document here showing the expiring term of those dates for each of the people that we've mentioned. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments in Category 1?
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in a second, any discussion? Please vote. Yes, five. Five present, approved. Anything else, Madam Clerk, in regard to item number 16, from a vote standpoint? Are we ready to go to Category 2?
Correct, yes.
All right. Category 2, procedure, all right. Mayor does not vote, list of applicants is presented, and the board votes by ballot or as a slate. Is there a, as a slate, if there is the same number of applicants as vacancy, mayor does not vote. In the first case, we have, in Category 2, with slate of appointments, we have three to be elected, and there are three in that category. Do I have a motion to approve the appointments as listed in Category 2?
So just clarify, those are for the Board of Appeals?
The Board of Appeals, Alan Johnson, Billy Ong, and Jennifer Deal. They expire 2025, all of their expiring terms. Do I have a motion approving the Category 2?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. If five aldermen present, five yes, they're approved. In the next procedure, which is Category 3, there will be two appointments in the Budget and Finance Committee, be voted on by ballot. The mayor and the vote, and the board vote on this ballot. So two out of six that are here. Do I have a motion to vote by ballot on the following applicants for the Budget and Finance Committee? Samuel Vernig, Stephen Marshall, Rod Romine, Richard Dalba, Pamela Yancy, and David Cushman. Do you have the ballots?
I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Second.
Two seconds, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And we have the ballots.
Everybody votes on this one.
Right.
You get to vote on that one?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
It's, you're different, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We're on the agenda, we have the ribs tonight, Mr. Mayor.
They've been moved forward to another date, we haven't set the date yet for the ribs to be brought in. Mr. Skane?
So I'll read the results of the vote. Larry Milton, Stephen Marshall, Rod Romine, Bill Skane, Pamela Yancy, and David Cushman. Ed Akers, Mayor Akers, Rod Romine, Pamela Yancy, Bob Simmons, Rod Romine, Pamela Yancy, Jamie Whitish, Pamela Yancy, and David Cushman, and Jesse, Rod Romine, and David Cushman. And I will tally that, because I didn't do that in my, I'm not sure I got that in my head. My tally shows that the vote was one for Stephen Marshall, four for Rod Romine, four for Pamela Yancy, and three for David Cushman. So that makes the result Rod Romine and Pamela Yancy to be on the Budget and Finance Committee.
So we have two that have four, one that has three, the two most votes are the ones approved. So Rod Romine and Pamela Yancy are the two representatives to the Capital Improvement and Finance Committee.
That's just the Budget and Finance Committee.
Budget and Finance, yeah. Budget and Finance, excuse me. The next one's on the Capitol. All right. Next, we have appointments for two Capital Improvement Committee to be voted on by ballot. Two applicants receiving the most votes by the mayor and board will be approved as appointed to the Capital Improvement Committee. Do I have a motion to vote by ballot on the following applicants for the Capital Improvement Committee?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made?
Second.
And a second? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's vote for the Capital Improvements Committee. Three candidates, Samuel Vernig, Gary Buckley, and Michael Pinkley.
Thank you, ma'am.
For capital improvement, the-
For Capital Improvement, the vote is Jerry Buckley and Michael Pinkley by Larry Milton, Bill Skane, Jerry Buckley and Michael Pinkley. Ed Akers, Jerry Buckley, Michael Pinkley. Bob Simmons, Jerry Buckley, Michael Pinkley. Jamie Whitish, Samuel Vernig, and Michael Pinkley. And Jesse, Jerry Buckley and Michael Pinkley. The result of the vote would be Jerry Buckley and Michael Pinkley to serve on the Capital Improvements Committee.
So we voted, do we affirm that by the approval of the ballot?
Yes.
All right. A motion to approve the ballot as presented?
So moved.
We're already, we had the motion a second, and the vote was by ballot, so we're ready for the next one, which is the Human Resource Committee.
Next, we have the appointments to be made for Human Resources Committee, to be covered, voted on by ballot. Two applicants receiving the most votes by the mayor and the board will be approved as appointed to the Human Resources Committee with terms expiring April 2021. Do I have a motion to vote by ballot on the following applicants for Human Resources?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All right. You just voice-balled, yes? Or do we need that?
For Human Resource Committee, we have Kentillis, Christina Matney, David Wood, Dale Smith, and Brian Kasaboom. And there'd be two.
Two.
So we have to.
So we're voting by ballot.
Thank you, ma'am.
Results of the vote for the HR Committee, Larry Milton, Christina Matney, and Brian Kasaboom. Bill Skane, Kentillis, and Christina Matney. Ed Akers, Kentillis, and Brian Kasaboom. Bob Simmons, Kentillis, and Brian Kasaboom. Jamie Whitish, Kentillis, and Brian Kasaboom. Jeff C., Kentillis, and Brian Kasaboom.
Kent and Brian.
The results of the vote would be Kentillis and Brian Kasaboom.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are we ready to move on to Item 17, dispersments? The next item is a review of the dispersments, June 4, 2020 through June 26, 2020. Are there any questions regarding these dispersments?
I make a motion to acknowledge the receipt of these dispersments from June 4, 2020 through June 26 of 2020.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Five present? Yes, five. Passed. See the way each alderman voted yes there? Next is individual alderman reports. McConnell's absent. Alderman Whitish, do you have anything you want to share?
I just enjoyed my training with the Missouri Municipal League last Friday, so.
Well, good. Alderman Simmons?
I just would like to appreciate you sending on to us all of the information you've gotten and comments from the public about Mass, our meeting coming up Thursday. I certainly appreciate that input, and I'm sure we're all reading everything that we can get our hands on about this. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Alderman Skane?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to reiterate the same thing that Alderman Milton and I reiterated at the previous meeting, that both of us have a horror of the actions of the KKK and the things that the lady said on film. She did apologize. I do think that there was at least two aldermen that were mischaracterized that sat in front of us, that it was their first meeting, and I think they were gobsmacked by that, and I thought they were treated unfairly by, and people that said some things. And that's just my opinion.
All right. Alderman Milton?
I guess I just want to publicly acknowledge that I've had numerous, numerous inquiries about our meeting on Thursday. The question was being, setting it at 2:00, 2:00 or 2:30? 2:00 in the afternoon. Many expressed how important of a decision this is. Many expressed how much they wanted to share their opinion with the board, and it felt uninviting to set a meeting at 2:00 on a Thursday in the middle of the week when many people have to work. Some comments were, it may be convenient for the board or the mayor, but it sure isn't convenient if we truly want to ask for public input. So when the initial invite went out, I asked if we could change it from 2:00 to either 5:30 or 6:00, and you could see what that result was. So I just wanted to make it public that at least I tried asking to change the time.
Alderman C.
Yeah, I'd still want to encourage people to send us the emails. We're getting a lot of them, but we can handle it. And don't specifically think you have to email that you're ward alderman. We're all one big ward on this. And just got to keep them coming.
Administrator Dobbins?
Jamie, get a chance?
Hi. I just want to make sure everybody hears this. Marshall, look at me. You do not speak for me. You never have the authority to speak for me. These gentlemen sitting up here give me a task. If four of them want something done, I try to get that done. You don't have any idea how I think or what I believe. I will tell you that there's some young ladies sitting here that I completely support, but I also have to support the Constitution of this great country. I think there's a way we can get done what they want done, but we have to work about it in a different fashion. And I would encourage you all to please come back and talk to us, and let's see what we can do to be productive on that. Please, I'm begging you to do that. I do not have an opinion about how they vote on anything that I share with anyone. Funniest thing about people around here is that I was raised in a very small town where a man's word meant something. No one could lie about him or lie to him, or usually their parents took care of that problem. If not, the community took care of that problem. I only came into this world with my name, and that's the only thing any of us are going out with, is your name. Don't ever think you can speak for anyone except yourself, because people, I know you're going to find this hard to believe, people will use you, they will lie to you, they will manipulate you. Don't allow that to happen, Marshall. You're too good of a person for that.
Just, I've been appreciative of the availability of the training. We had a great meeting. Our city staff went to a lot of work to put stuff together. And then going off to Jeff City to visit with folks there and to meet with other people who are Class 4 people is important, but to get the information you need to get to be able to do your job here. Unlike Mr. Milton, I've had one person that's inquired about the 2:00, and I'm the one that set it. So if there's anybody to blame, I'm right here. I set the 2:00 meeting. My reasoning was, is that 2:00 isn't around mealtime. So a lot of our restaurant businesses would maybe be able to make it at 2:00 in the day. Our theaters that have shows at nighttime can't come in the evening time. And the biggest factor was, is we have over 20 people, staff, that work here at the city that are directors, that have to stay late when we have a late meeting. And we've got a meeting tonight, and they're all in there. So I set the 2:00 meeting on purpose. Blame me. I take full responsibility for it. This city is your home and my home. And we're not going to get anywhere unless we start working together and communicating. I put out a proclamation sharing my problem with the hate issues that were going on in this community. I put out additional information in regard not to allowing or tolerating any racism. But I haven't heard anyone say any acknowledgement about that was a statement against some of the things that happened. But we work by law. We try to do what's right, and we have good people that are working hard to do stuff. That's all I have to say. Is there a motion?
To adjourn. Yes, sir.
Second. Motion and a second. Call for the vote? Do we need to vote?
I'll push the button.
Five yes. Meeting adjourned.